Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call the order of the Folsom City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd. If the city's clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. We have some exciting things to go over, but I'll have the city clerk call the first item.
For agenda updates tonight, you just have one item that's been updated. Item 8C has additional correspondence that was received after the agenda packet went out. That correspondence has been provided to the council and is available to the public at the back table.
Okay. As a reminder, because I see them dribbling in, if you guys, if anyone out there apologizes, if anybody out there has an item they want to speak to that's on the agenda this evening, we do require that you fill out a blue card. Please give it to the officer. I know there's a lot of people here, and some people obviously will want to speak on some of the items. In order for us to manage the time and the agenda, I'd like to have those in our hands by 7 o'clock at the latest. If you have items that are later in the agenda, that would be very much appreciated, because then, again, we can balance the time and give everybody an opportunity to speak. So if you know you're gonna be speaking an item, please bring your blue slips up to the officer here on the side. Okay, with that called, the next item, please.
Your next item is business from the floor, and you have no request to speak under business from the floor.
Okay, business from the floor. If anybody wants to talk to the city council about an item not on the agenda this evening, so if anybody has something they want to say. Okay, seeing no one rushing the podium, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
Your next item tonight is scheduled presentations. Your one scheduled presentation is a presentation of proposed Folsom flag from Vista del Lago High School students.
So as the two young ladies come on up, as the two young ladies come up, I gotta share with you. So I had the opportunity to visit Vista del Lago, what, about a month ago, three weeks ago, something like that? And I met these two young ladies in a government class, and they had, the class had a whole bunch of questions, and these two young ladies posed a question to me if we had a Folsom flag. And I said, honestly, and you guys know this, I said, "Yeah, but quite honestly, I think it's ugly." That is our Folsom flag. It was done, I believe, in 1997, when the city council did that flag. And so they asked if they could research and possibly bring forward to the city council and the community a proposed new flag for the city of Folsom. So, welcome, ladies. Introduce yourselves, and the floor is yours. Start your presentation.
All right. Hello, my name is Ciara Stewart. And this is Sienna Hansen. And we're here to propose a new city flag for Folsom. We believe that Folsom should have a city flag, because we want to be able to have a symbol that can stand to represent the things that we find special about our city and the things that make our city unique. So, we wanted to create a flag that could show our rich history and our community and our culture within this city, so that when people looked up at the flag, they could see those things and feel pride in the great city that we live in, and so that they could feel unified in this great place, and they could know that we are all residents of Folsom, and we all belong here, because this place is our home. We also wanted to create this flag so that it could be a symbol for other cities to see us by, to know what we find makes us special and what makes us unique, and so that they could see how much we love our city.
Before I moved to Folsom a couple of years ago, people talked about how it's a great city, how there's a really cool lake, and there's a prison, and a great Costco. But after moving here, I realized that there's so much more to our city that's important. There's so much history and so much that we can be proud of. So during our research, I came across a quote that really embodied why we think we should have a flag. Roman Mars said that if you have a great city flag, you would have a banner for people to rally under, to face those more important things. There's so many important things in our world today that we need to handle and conquer, and we believe that Folsom can do that, and that if we come together as a community, we can do great things. Chicago is a city that has an amazing flag, and it has an amazing community that is benefited from their flag. So we wanted to talk about this as an example that we believe Folsom can become like. So Chicago's flag is a symbol of pride for their civilians. They're very proud of their city, they love their community, and they can see that through their flag. The flag is everywhere. It's on street corners, on bumper stickers, on coffee mugs. We can see really clearly that they show their love for their city through this flag. They even have it on officers' casket when they pass away instead of the US flag, which shows how important it is to them.
We wanted to create a flag for Folsom that could be as special to us and to the members and the residents of Folsom as Chicago's flag is to their people.
So we decided to do some research to see what would make a good flag. We came across some flag etiquette, so what should be on a flag and what shouldn't be on a flag. We found that's really important to keep it simple. You want to use meaningful symbolism, because we can want to communicate the history and the community and what we believe in as a city. We want to keep it to three, two or three colors, because we don't want it to be too cluttered, and you don't want to use lettering, seals, or writing, because that would create confusion and distract from the symbolism and distinctive things we're trying to communicate through our flag.
With all of our research finished and our passion for this flag, we were able to come up with and design this flag for Folsom. Now, the flag is here to symbolize the things that we find to be most important and most rich about our city. So firstly, we have the gold stripe that runs through the center of the flag, and that represents the Gold Rush, because it was a huge part of our city's founding and a huge part of what made it what it is today, not only for our city but also our state. And if you'll notice, the line doesn't run in one fluid stripe through the flag. It meets in the middle, but it overlaps a little bit, and we wanted to have that to represent the convergence of the past and the present in our city, because we believe that the Gold Rush was a huge part of our city's history, but we're still experiencing Gold Rushes today in our own way. With new innovation and technology, with intel and the expansion of homes, Folsom is still a booming city. It's thriving and it's growing, and we wanted to have that represented in our flag.
Not only do the two stripes not come together, but they meet at a point. And we designed the flag so that all the aspects come together at a central point, because during the Gold Rush and during our past history, Folsom was a center place. During the Gold Rush, it was close to San Francisco, where there was a port, people and supplies came in, and it was also close to the gold mines themselves. So people would come here to create a livelihood, to create a future for themselves. We also believe that in our current history, Folsom is a center place. We know that we're only a day's drive from so many places. You can get to Sacramento, San Francisco, Lake Tahoe, just a few hours' drive, and it's a center place for a lot of community. Also, it's a center for diversity and culture. This was a center for 18 Native American tribes, and it's also a place that people from all around the world come for jobs, for innovation, for safe homes. We wanted to communicate, because that is such an important part of our city.
Next, we have the black triangles in the flag, which are representative of the Folsom Prison. The Folsom Prison was the second prison in California and the first maximum-security prison in the state, and it was the first in our country to have electricity. So we felt that it was hugely important to be in our flag. Not only does it represent our history, but it still plays a pivotal role in our community today. The Folsom Prison produces license plates, they refurbish old bikes for kids in need, they train canine companions there, they have an essential role in our community, and therefore, we felt it was necessary to have it in our flag. Lastly, we have the blue in the flag, which is representative of the waters. We have the river and the lake, and with both of those come great centers of recreation in our city, for people to be able to come together and to have community there. And with the lake comes also the dam and the hydroelectric energy that comes with that, which is a huge part of our city and really important. So we wanted to have that additionally in the flag.
We also created the triangles that represent the prison to be black, because we want to represent Johnny Cash, who's the man in black. We feel like he is an important part of our city, because he put us on the map. People know Folsom from the Folsom Prison Blues, so we wanted to communicate that also through our flag.
When Sienna and I found out that Folsom didn't have a flag, we, or at least one in active use, we knew that it was important to us to do our best to create something that we could be proud of, to show how important our city is and how special it is. And so, we poured our hearts and souls into our research and our flag, and we hope that you will love it as much as we do. Thank you.
I gotta say, ladies and gentlemen... You know, when they asked me for this challenge, I said, "The door is open. Nobody's come to us since the late 90s," and I think what you have brought forward, the fact that the depth and knowledge of your research and the symbolism research and the flag etiquette, nobody's ever done that. And so you have to be congratulated on, in my opinion, I love this. I love it very much. It hit every point that this community is all about, in my opinion. I mean, I could add a whole bunch of things to it, but I think the strength of what you've already shared is really the strength and core of the community to begin with, not only presently, but certainly you've elevated from our past as well. I like the way you tied in the Gold Rush, because we are still in a Gold Rush, just like you said, a different era of the type of Gold Rush that we're doing and all the other things. Yes, we can't forget our Johnny Cash heritage. Like we discussed, you know, wherever we go, we always get asked, all of us, "Oh, Folsom? Johnny Cash Prison?" So, I think you hit a home run with this one. I, for one, like it very, very much. I'd be very proud if the council decides to give the direction to the city manager about bringing it back to us for decision points, because obviously, we can't make a vote this evening. But I really am impressed with the work you young ladies did. It's just overwhelming, and it was worth certainly the standing ovation. Any questions for them?
Well, I just got a comment. You know, thanks for all the great work and the symbolism and description of the symbolism. I have a son that graduated from Folsom and another graduated from Vista, so I'm interested that you got the royal blue up there instead of the Vista Navy blue.
No, great, great work, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a comment, because I made a mistake similar when I first came here. I joined the Folsom Athletic Association, and a couple of years, I became the executive director, who I was asked to redesign the logo, and had some ideas given to me. I thought, "Well, that's great," and went ahead and had it done. I made the mistake of asking, not asking, the people who designed the first one. And I offended quite a few people that spent a lot of time doing it, so I like what you presented. It's easy, you can, I may have to remember all the details. However...
We'll help you.
Thanks. Wait a minute, your hair is getting as white as mine, I don't know.
At least they still got it.
I can't argue that, but I was gonna say, I'm not against the flag at all. I just think we have to pay courtesy to the people that, I guess that's the flag. To tell you the truth, I didn't realize we had a flag. I've only been here 32 years, I guess I'm still a learner, you know? But that's all I say, and that's up to the city manager to do the homework and just find out where that came from, and then pay the respects to the people that did it.
I believe that person is in the room. I heard through the grapevine, it's former mayor Glenn Fait, who's sitting in the second row.
Roger, you had a comment?
Yeah.
The current mayor was vice...
I know. At the time, it seemed like a good idea. I'm just teasing you, Glenn. I have a few closing comments, but go ahead.
Yeah, a few things. I really like this idea. In fact, when I was elected, one of the things I emailed, which wasn't like on the top of my mind, I just figured, "Hey, do we have a flag?" And the fact that you took the initiative to really go out, this thing actually does a couple of things for me when I look at it. First of all, it's new. It's, I wouldn't say I wanted to replace the flag, I'd say I wanted to be the flag, but also have that historical to see the, you know, how your minds think versus how maybe Steve's minds thought maybe back then, but...
It's a courtesy to the mayor.
Correct. The blue and black means a lot. I look at this and I think of different things in Folsom, like Folsom PD and the strength of our officers and different things like that, but also, this is actually a representative of Vista's flag and the ground in Folsom, because I graduated Folsom High, and you always hear Bulldogs, you hear this, you hear that, and you hear some things about Vista, because it's an amazing school, but this is one of those significant things that you literally are claiming your stake in this city? And that's what I look at it. When I see it, I'm like, "Yes, like, fine, like, this is how we do this." Like, I love it, I love looking at it, and I, it just brings up all kinds of excitement in my mind, so congratulations. And I, for one, would echo the same thing and say, "I would love to see this as representative of our city," so, congrats.
Lady, you want to comment before I close?
I really just wanted to, the mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with these wonderful young women a few days ago, and I'm just so impressed with your leadership and your creativity and standing up in front of all of these people who are here, all because of your flag item. That's why you're all here, right? That takes a lot of guts for anyone, especially someone who's just in high school, and I just really appreciate that and thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I do want to pay homage to Mayor Fait at the time. He did bring this to us, and it represents a lot of the things that were very important in our heritage, and I think what you're doing here can actually share additional to all that, because everything that's in here ties into what's currently on that flag. And if you look, there's some of those colors that are there that are gonna be on here. But I do like Roger's comments, I think when we were, if the council and I'd like to have the manager bring it back to the next meeting for a potential action item. So if we do retire that flag, I want to make sure that flag is preserved someplace in City Hall as our first flag, if we decide to go with this one, and so, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to see this as an action item at our first meeting in November. The consensus says that. So, young ladies, we'll see you second Tuesday in November for a decision. So, again, thank you very much, I'm so impressed, and thank you for bringing it up to me. You took a lot of guts to do that, too, so thank you, ladies. Did a great job. I was just teasing you, mayor. Okay, call the next item, please.
Your next item is the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a consent calendar. Anybody wishing to pull an item off?
I want to pull B. I got a couple of questions from Marcus.
B isn't boy?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move items A and C.
Back in.
I'm sorry, Roger, did you want to pull something?
Yeah, C.
Okay, so, B and C are polls, so I'll move item A.
Second.
Call the roll, item A, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. So clerk, if you can read off item B.
Item B is Resolution Number 10193. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with waterworks engineers for pre-design engineering services for the Folsom Boulevard trunk sewer rehab project.
Marcus, the staff report says that the expected increases are from flows from the prison. Is there an INI problem up there that they have not addressed?
Mayor Miklos, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director, council member Howell, at this point, we are unaware of any significant INI infiltration, concerns that the prison may have. We just understand from our inter-agency agreement that we looked at their build-out conditions, and that's one of the drivers for this study and the project itself.
Are they, what is it that they're gonna build up there that we don't know about?
It's just based, I don't know any actual facilities that they plan to build, it's just, under the current agreement, there's up to 2.5 million gallons per day that the prison could contribute to the sewer system. Right now, average day, they're roughly 1.25, 1.2 in average day demands, but that's not considering any peaking factors, so that's the max day demand that our agreement between the city and the prison authorizes, so that's the condition in which we modeled for the analysis.
Okay, so, then my next question is, is that a clay pipe?
I would have to double-check if they're, if that pipe system...
Dave's saying yes. So my suggestion is, when you're going through this analysis, I'm quite certain that if we're talking about increased flows for whatever reasons, but I would like to know the reasons for those increased flows, but if that pipe diameter's gonna increase, given the significant amount of traffic on Folsom Boulevard where that line is located, can we look at pipe bursting as opposed to open trench?
Yes, we will evaluate all various construction alternatives for that pipeline.
Let me throw in a comment for you, Carrie. So it's no secret, for many, many years, I've been pushing CDCR to try to get the 750-bed medical facility within Folsom Prison. We're number two left on the list. Number one doesn't want it. I've wanted it for many, many years, for many, many reasons. I think it's an economic generator for not only the Folsom Prison, but certainly for economic, because, again, they can be more efficient. But what we would gain as a city would be a lot of high-end medical jobs and suppliers and those kind of things. And selfishly, once we plop that facility inside the walls, then they'll stop considering us to relocate death row. So I've been fighting that death row battle since 1996, so I'm hoping maybe we're moved up to the list where number one, who's on the list, doesn't want it, and number two, and I actually addressed the state wardens meeting last week, and basically pitched again that we want that medical facility. So maybe it's in the works as a standby in case we get awarded that facility, so that could be where it's coming from.
And I have no problem with all of the reasons that you stated.
But I appreciate what you're saying, because, again, this is stuff I don't know, where I'm out pitching this kind of thing. We gotta know if the infrastructure's there, which, if that's why you guys...
No, and we talked about this, I don't know, six or seven years ago.
Oh, at least.
We thought it was gonna come here. And also, if that's the case, then CDCR needs to be making a significant contribution to whatever the construction cost is.
Correct. And based on that type of facility that you're describing, we would have whoever the engineer is of record do an analysis just to verify that whatever they build does not impact our system, and if it does, that they make the proper upgrades and capital improvements to mitigate those.
And I'm sure they would, because, you know, CDCR over the last probably 10, 12 years, and Carrie knows, and even I need to a degree, in the past, they've not been really good partners for probably the last 12 years at least. They're locked up in barrow with us on almost everything that they do and we do, so I think they would step up. In fact, I know they would, so...
You know, either that or investigate leaving the existing line in service during construction and moving the new line somewhere else that will avoid the disruption.
And that is, one of the plans is, if we build a parallel pipeline, that you would have that as an alternative pipeline, but you could also take that line out of service and do a complete investigation inside the pipeline to identify if there's any capital improvements that were required for the old line.
Yeah, and I'm just suggesting the investigation of pipe bursting, if that same alignment's gonna be used, only in my personal experience, it's way cheaper than open trench.
Okay, you want to move the item?
With that, I'll move the item. All right, thanks.
Okay, I'll second. Call the roll, the item, please.
Second.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And if you call item C, please.
Item C is Resolution Number 10194, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept offers of dedication for the Russell Ranch lots 24 through 32, large lot final map, and approval of the lots 24 through 32, large lot final map for Russell Ranch.
I just wanted to vote independently on it.
Okay, so I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
And call the roll, please.
I just want to add a comment.
Yeah.
As I've done with all of these final maps, I've gone through all the conditions, and the developer has met all the conditions that basically would require us to approve the map.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Stain.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, and call the next one. Where we at?
Takes us to new business item 8A, Community Facilities District Number 22 for Folsom Heights. You have two resolutions before you tonight. Resolution Number 10196, appointing consultants, approving a proposed boundary map, and declaring the intention to form the CFD, and Resolution Number 10197, a resolution declaring the necessity for incurring bonded indebtedness in and for the city of Folsom, CFD Number 22, and calling for a public hearing thereon.
That's a mouthful.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Donahue, Deputy Treasurer, and let me see if I can get this up here. Tonight, we're here because Folsom Heights LLC has requested the city of Folsom form this proposed Community Facilities District Number 22. The formation is subject to the Melrose Act and city policies regarding land secured financing districts. And here we have a map of the proposed boundaries for the district, and you can either turn your head 90 degrees to the left, or you can note that north is on the left side of the map here. You'll see that this district would be bounded by El Dorado County to the east, the Russell Ranch Development to the west, Highway 50 to the north, and White Rock Road to the south. Currently, it's comprised of 23 parcels. And the development within CFD Number 22 would include 530 residential units broken down as described, and also 11.4 acres of commercial property primarily near the Highway 50 area. CFD Number 22 will provide backbone infrastructure and facilities necessary for development. From a high-level perspective, these improvements include transportation, water, wastewater and drainage system improvements, as well as park and open space improvements. In addition, there is a project-specific maintenance services component, which includes maintenance, maintaining landscaping corridors, enhanced open space, and streetlights. And in response to an inquiry that was received, CFD 22 will not be providing for school facilities. A more comprehensive list of both the facilities and services to be funded are included as exhibits A and B to Resolution 10196.
Does that mean that school fees are paid separately, just not through the CFD?
Correct.
Okay. Just didn't want anybody thinking they weren't paying school fees.
Not with this, no. CFD Number 22, the facility's special tax currently would be levied at, through 2069 and 70, at the city council discretion, with the maximum facility special tax ranging from $2,000 to $2,900 per unit, increased annually by 2%, and the debt limit is $40 million for this district. The services special tax would be levied in perpetuity at city council discretion. The maximum service special, maximum services special tax is $400 for each residential unit in fiscal year 18, $19, and will be increased annually by the CPI index, as shown, not to exceed 4% annually.
Why are we using the Bay Area as the measuring stick?
It's pretty much the recognized CPI industry standard. Well, and I don't know, I mean, we have been using it, and I don't know that we would necessarily want to deviate from one district to another if you have a neighboring district that uses one.
Well, I'm just asking, if there's a CPI for Sacramento, that's what we should be using.
No, there isn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The estimated tax rate is 1.83%, which is below the 2% threshold set in the policies approved by this council. Financing would be provided either from bond proceeds or pay-go revenue. Maximum facility special tax will be levied upon a building permit. The pay-go would be 100% to the developers for the first 20 years, and then 100% to the city if required after that, similar to the other CFDs we've created in the plan area. City council retains after debt services paid and at its sole discretion the right to extend, discontinue, or reduce the maximum special tax. So with that, staff would recommend the approval of Resolution 10196, the resolution of intention to form CFD Number 22, approve the boundary map that you saw, the rate and method of apportionment, and approve the consultants that are listed in the resolution. And also, we ask for approval of Resolution 10197, which declares the necessity for incurring bonded indebtedness, and calls for a public hearing, which would be taking place on November 27.
Okay. Any questions for John?
So what does the EID, like, service come in this with, as far as maintenance, and then everything on that, as far as what we're responsible for versus what EID is responsible for?
Well, I believe Marcus would have to speak to what they're responsible for, but in terms of this CFD, any improvements that we provided for EID would have to come after we had a joint community facilities agreement with EID, which is something that the city and EID would have to agree upon together and which would come before the council.
Would it make sense to have that in place prior to this, to CFD?
Well, actually... Well, actually, we would need that prior to a bond issuance. We don't necessarily need it prior to the formation. This kind of leaves us avenues to choose what we choose to finance down the road. This leaves us more avenues than just saying, no, it'll only be City of Folsom improvement, or...
Are we responsible for maintenance for this area? Or does that fall on EID? I know the service territory is EID, but does Folsom, with this CFD, and we pay for the infrastructure, and then it's with the bonded and whatnot, is that, going forward, where does that responsibility lie? And what's our forecasted expenditures and exposures for it?
Oh, well, Tim, if you can... Yeah, I don't know about the maintenance specifically.
Good evening, Marcus Yasataki, Environmental Water Resources Director. Councilmember Gaylord, in terms of the facilities installed, so whether it's a water, wastewater, or recycled water facilities, those three facilities in particular, and specifically, those would be the responsibility of El Dorado Irrigation District. Because of Folsom Heights being within EID's service area, we, the city, has received a letter probably about four years ago from EID stating that they want to maintain the responsibility and ownership of those facilities. And with that, they would then have their rates set accordingly to collect the operations and maintenance fees for each of those facilities. We may have an inter-agency agreement, as John mentioned, but we also may have one in terms of emergency operations. So if, for some reason, EID's system had a failure and they could not deliver water, it's their infrastructure is so close to the cities that we could have a physical enter tie that we could open up, just so we didn't have Folsom residents, not necessarily Folsom water customers, but Folsom residents, not out of service.
So I know that we will have a tie-in for redundancy, right? That's what we were kind of talking about. But as far as that letter four years ago, it mentioned the lack of water supply from EID to the Folsom Heights service area on that territory. But with regards to, you know, ensuring, I feel like we should have this joint venture in all of these, like, kind of, you know, Ts crossed and Is dotted prior to pushing forward the CFD for this development.
Yeah, that's probably not my territory, but I'll turn that back over to John.
Maybe I'm jumping too far ahead. I don't know.
And I just want to clarify something based on what you just said. I think I heard you say that EID said that they don't have the water to supply this area. That's not true.
It's absolutely true. In that letter four years ago from EID, I can't reference it, but I could definitely provide it again. It stated in there, there was a lack of water, and they weren't sure if they had enough to actually supply the full-on development of Folsom Heights.
I'm not aware of that specific language, but I do know that EID, and I may be speaking a little bit out of my range here, but EID does have a specific process that they go through for development, where they issue what they call a facility improvement letter, and even a, maybe not so close as to a will-serv letter, because I believe EID's policies are when you purchase or submit your fees for connection, that's when they will say, yes, we will issue what they call a will-serv letter.
I just don't want to be on the hook for maintenance and costs that we're not in the service area, so I'd like to offset that, you know, the brunt, and going forward, have, you know, contracts and agreements in place beforehand, instead of after the fact, where we're like, hey, you know, they have an issue, they have a lack of water, so now we have to flip the pipe from Folsom and apply even more water north of 50 to south of 50, supplying Folsom Heights. Not saying that's going to happen, I'm just saying, you know, in looking forward, I'd rather see that in place prior to this. So I just...
Okay. Yeah, I'm not quite sure how we address that with the CFD, but it would be my intent that if, for some reason, EID says, you know, we need help, that we would have some sort of inter-agency agreement that would cover not only what the requirements are, but any cost recovery for the city, because we do not have this water system, sewer system, built into any current city rates that would absorb any cost potentially down the line. So we would have to build in some sort of cost recovery or reimbursement as part of an agreement.
That's what I'd like to see prior to that.
Yeah. Let me just jump in with an analogy, and I've been sitting up here long enough to have seen a few of these things. And this is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here the way I view this. But, you know, when we talk about growth paying for itself, this is a good example of that. So we set up these CFDs, getting into the slightly more complicated issue of the fact that we're going to have two different water districts down there. We already have two different water districts in the City of Folsom. We have the San Juan Water District that serves some of the folks on the northern end of town. And there is a distinct separation. I mean, the infrastructure gets built by the developer slash bonded indebtedness of these CFDs. It doesn't matter who's servicing it, that builds and sets up the infrastructure. The concern that I'm hearing, which is very valid, is after that, what happens? Well, EID is the servicer for a portion of this property south of Highway 50, and they can't abandon that. It is their duty and obligation, moving forward, is they maintain that infrastructure. It's maintained by their rate structure, which you mentioned, Marcus. So in a way, it's very similar to what we have with the San Juan Water District, where at least our retail San Juan Water District users, where that got put in a long time ago, who knows how that got set up. But the people that live there pay their water bill to San Juan Water District. It's in the City of Folsom. But if those pipes have problems, those rate payers in the San Juan Water District takes care of it. So am I characterizing that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think the only other thing to add to this is that we already have interconnection between the City of Folsom and San Juan, and we also already have interconnection between the city and Folsom and EID for purposes of redundancy if there's problems predominantly in the EID system.
We do have an interconnection with San Juan Water District. We currently don't have an interconnection with EID.
But that's been planned for some time.
But we do have basically a project ready to go if, for some reason, we needed to. And it's a smaller portion of the city that EID's would be able to serve. It'd be difficult moving water from Folsom into EID just because of elevation differences, but there is a proposed project.
So really, I mean, I hear what Councilmember Gaylord is saying, but as Andy was sharing, when a water purveyor, just like we do, has a service territory guaranteed and restricted by law, that in itself overrides anything that we could do, because of the fact, they're the service provider, they have that inherent responsibility, period. One thing to possibly down the line, because like John said, we have to have this in place in order to even start the infrastructure. We won't sell any bonds, so if you feel, Marcus, in your department, that maybe there's an additional agreement to be had, I don't think we do, because again, if they're the service provider, they have to do it, just as Andy described and Kerry did with San Juan Water, then, you know, let's make that happen. But he brought up some very good points, so I think the education that everyone got here this evening was very valid, to let people know that this isn't the first one we work with. It probably won't be the last one. I can use the Aerojet as an example, I can use the SoCal Water, I mean, all that kind of stuff. So they're the provider, they have the responsibility.
So with all due respect, and I appreciate all of the, you know, the details on it, I just don't feel comfortable. I wasn't there for that vote. I am here for this vote. So I don't feel comfortable saying it's going to be taken care of, because this is how we did it prior. I want to make sure it's all set in stone.
It's taken care of, because they're the service provider. California law makes them take care of it. It has nothing to do with us. If they don't take care of it, we can take the service area from them. They don't have a choice. That's what I'm trying to say.
And they don't want that at all.
Yeah, so like with San Juan as an example, we would love to have that territory as a city totally in us. It was San Juan's territory, and I said, you want to expand over there? We're keeping our water service territory. It's very similar to what we have down south. When we actually went into the Aerojet property, all the way down to Sunrise, I believe it is, or Hazel, somewhere down, Hazel. We had to service that water to Aerojet, even though we were allowed to use it some other places. But it was our service area, we had to provide it. So, but anyway, so in the meantime, so to kind of find a compromise, I think this needs to still go forward. But I'd like you to get together with them, and if there's additional language you want to craft, I mean, there's no harm, no foul. It's just revalidating what their law responsibility is we could do. They shouldn't have any issue with it.
And then just one other item to add. The EID Board of Directors, probably six, seven years ago now, also approved the water supply assessment, which is required for a development of this size as well, which identified how much water would be needed in the Folsom Heights service area.
So either that letter or the letter four years ago, I can't remember which one, because I don't have it with me. I wish I would have brought it. But that one is the one that specifies that they're unsure if they have enough water resources to cover that service area. And that's what we talked about, I can't remember when Folsom Heights, the final map came, maybe 18 months ago. I can't remember when it was. But that letter had surfaced, and I don't remember, I just don't have it with me to reference it. So that's why I'm just not comfortable with the fastness of running through all this. And maybe, you know, they've been here for a while, so they know this stuff. But not seeing the fact that we're not going to be providing additional water, it is under the EID, we are protected, Folsom residents, current and future, are protected from it, and we're not, you know, going down the route that I don't want to see us go down, so...
Yeah. And one thing we would have to do, too, is that area currently isn't in the city's water service area. So we would have to somehow annex that into the city's service area before we could legally provide water to that specific part of the plan area.
Which, in a nutshell, just means very simply, just like we have the same police power, if there's no water, we can withhold a will-serv lever. So whether it's EID or San Juan in our city, if they don't have the water to serve, our residents are going to be cut back in their districts, just like we can do within our own district. So I hear what you're saying, but I think, again, we're restricted, because it is their territory. And if there's, say, if there's shorter water that particular year, and that was maybe third phase of whatever development's going on, they can say, no, we can't serve it. We can do the same thing within our own service territory. So I think all your concerns are covered. It's all in there. Like I said, they have the same police power as we do to withhold water if they don't have it.
So I'll take a look for maybe the letter or staff report or something that references what you're...
I could see, but again, they actually, the board took a vote and said, yes, we can do this. But again, it's kind of like when we take our votes for whatever. If we looking at what's going on with water, we can withhold permits if we don't believe we can serve it. Whether it be water, I mean, there's other issues, we can go into sewer and stuff like that. So this is one of many, but that's part of their rights within their service territory.
So I guess, last question, are we providing any additional water for, like, wastewater or, not wastewater, I'm sorry, like landscaping and all that jazz?
Or recycled?
Recycled water, yeah.
We would not be providing any recycled water to that service area, nor would we be providing any wastewater services to that area.
All EID.
It should be all EID.
And in fact, we are requiring the installation of reclaimed water piping. Our only potential source of reclaimed water is actually from EID. That comes basically from a wastewater treatment plant, or, you know, unless we were to build some sort of sewer facility, which we're not planning on doing, the wastewater plant is 40-plus miles away from here, so no one's pushing water from Elk Grove to Folsom for reclaimed water. We've had conversations with EID on and off for a number of years about whether or not they could provide reclaimed water to us, because we're downhill from them.
The logic of this discussion, in my mind, is if you have the right, and they do by law, to service that area, the logic says you'll maintain the maintenance so you can provide the service and gather the revenue. I mean, they'd be foolish, and I'm sure they're not, to not provide the maintenance so they can continue to get the revenue. So, you know, maybe we could, makes some kind of words, but to me, if I'm the EID, and I'm in charge and I want that revenue, I'm going to do my maintenance. I mean, I'd be dumb to do it, because if the maintenance collapsed the system, they haven't got the revenue.
And EID was pretty adamant about not relinquishing that service area. They wanted it.
Well, yeah, that's what you were thinking. So in a nutshell, yeah, they are responsible for everything. So any more questions for them before we really back in on...
Do we have a public hearing on the first item?
This is just new business. Do we have any speakers request for this one?
No, you do not.
Okay. So John, anything else you want to add, or?
No, I can press that too.
Okay. Well, I'll move resolution 10196.
Second.
Comments on that one? Call the roll on that item, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
No.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And I'll move 10197.
Second.
Hold the roll on that, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
No.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, call the next item, please.
Your next...
Thanks, John.
Your next item is item 8.
John.
I'm saying, thank you. You answered a lot of questions.
No, 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 that's fine. No, your questions are appropriate, Roger, so that was good.
Okay, your next item is 8B. This is resolution number 10195, a resolution of the city council approving annexation agreement with the Sacramento Regional Transit District.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos. Steve Fox out.
It'd be bad.
And members of the city council, Dave Nugent, your public works director. The item for you tonight is a resolution authorizing the City of Folsom stage line to be annexed into Sacramento Regional Transit. The mechanism of the annexation would be by way of an annexation agreement between the City of Folsom and SACRT that covers the terms and conditions for the annexation. The draft agreement, along with the accompanying exhibits, are incorporated within the resolution, included in your packet for your reference. The, let's see, to provide some background regarding the annexation before you tonight, as many of you may know, Sacramento Regional Transit has approached the city numerous times over the past several years to inquire about annexation. Those discussions, while they were productive at the time, seemed to stall for one reason or another. Many of the issues revolved around decreases in service levels, as well as negative effects on stage line employees. Earlier this year, SACRT officials once again approached the city to investigate annexation. Over the past several months, numerous meetings have occurred between staff with the city and SACRT, and to vet out some of the pitfalls that were in the previous The agreement included in your packet tonight represents the outcome of those meetings. The proposed annexation will result in a seamless transition for current Folsom transit users, including our dialeride customers, which has been a topic of concern for many of our customers. There are six main items within the agreement: service levels, fares, rolling stock and vehicles, employee transition, maintenance responsibilities, and transit fund balance transfers. To the services, all dialeride services will remain the same, including eligibility, hours of operation, reservations, and personal assistance services. All fixed route services will remain the same as well. Paratransit services will be expanded for Folsom residents that are paratransit eligible. They will have the ability to take paratransit trip from Folsom to anywhere in RT's complimentary paratransit coverage area. For the fares, all existing fares will remain the same, including the monthly dialeride fare, which includes unlimited rides. An enhancement would be the monthly youth fare would be reduced from $50 down to $20 per month. For the transfer of vehicles, under this agreement, the city will transfer to SACRT our rolling stock inventory of vehicles, which include six 23-foot cutaway buses. Those are our dialeride buses. Yes, sir?
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. They would also include the transfer of five 32-foot, our low-floor main route buses, as well as two support vehicles. Branding on the vehicles remain as is, with the current branding of our Folsom stage line, but they will probably include some regional transit logos to identify them as regional transit vehicles.
Can we go back to the vehicles? Are we going to be compensated for our current inventory?
I can't.
Are we going to be compensated for our current inventory, or is it just going to be?
So all the vehicles were purchased under federal, with federalized dollars. So they weren't Folsom money to begin with. So it's a transfer from one federal agency or servicer to another federal servicer. So there's no money of exchange hands for the vehicles. To the employee transition, which was another pitfall in our earlier discussions, the current staffing for our transit division include five permanent part-time drivers, two permanent full-time drivers, two permanent full-time schedulers, and one permanent full-time trainer. Under the agreement, the City of Folsom Transit employees will be given an employment option at SACRT with the goal of providing each employee a fair and reasonable opportunity to continue their career. SACRT is offering employment to all City of Folsom Transit Fund employees with no probationary period. SACRT is offering two employment options for our bus operators. Also offered positions for non-operators that are within the type of work they are performing within the city. In addition, SACRT will be providing all employees with a pension compensation package to ensure that the employees are made whole for their service credit in the city's pension plan. For the maintenance, bus shelters will be transferred to SACRT. For the maintenance, bus shelters will be transferred to SACRT, maintained under the advertising agreement that's existing with a third-party contractor. All existing bus stops will be transferred to SACRT, and they will be responsible for maintenance of all the amenities at the stops. The three park-and-ride lots at Iron Point, Glen, or the Robert G. Holden Station, and the historic Folsom Station will remain under city ownership and city maintenance. SACRT will reimburse the city for all maintenance of the lots under this agreement. For the transfer of the transit fund balance, upon completion of the transition, the city will transfer any unexpended transit fund balance to SACRT. These funds are specifically designated to be used within the City of Folsom service As part of that transfer, we will gain a greater weighted voting on the SACRT board by means of the increased influx into SACRT. Those will take place at the January or February SACRT meeting if this moves forward. With me tonight to answer any questions you may have are city staff, Marie McKeeth and Matt Mock. And with Sacramento Regional Transit, we have Henry Lee, the general manager and CEO, Mark Lonergan, Brent Berniger, and Jamie Adelman. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Henry Lee for his take on the annexation with RT. Henry, you want to come on up and say a few words?
And I'll just jump in here as Henry's moving towards the podium here. So I've been on the regional transit board for about the last twelve years, and I'll have some additional comments later. But Henry came to us. You've been general manager now at Regional Transit for three years now, Henry, or two and a half, something?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. But there has been a tremendous improvement in the efficiency of this agency, and Henry's always the first to give credit to the many employees at Sacramento Regional Transit. As Dave mentioned, this has been thought about. In fact, not just the past few years, but probably since I've been on the regional transit board the past twelve. And it wasn't the right time earlier. The agency had work to do to gain efficiencies, and there really, we felt, was not a lot to gain by pursuing this annexation. But I'm here today to tell you that it is a very different, very efficient agency that really is, it's operated by a board that cares a great deal. And again, Henry, and what do we have, about a thousand, eleven hundred employees at Sacramento Regional Transit? So I believe there are many more pros than cons to this. But with that, Henry, I'll just leave you the floor there, and I'll have additional comments later. Thanks, Henry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It is a great honor to speak in front of this great council in this historical moment. About two and a half years ago, when councilmember Andy and his colleagues selected me as the general manager of SACRT, I heard loud and clear that SACRT needs to work more collaboratively with our regional partners. Since that time, we have diligently worked with regional representatives, business leaders, elected officials, community stakeholders, and the public to turn around SACRT, to ensure SACRT operates like a true business enterprise. One, that is transparent, accountable, and puts customers first in what we do. Fast forward to early this year, when we applied for four hundred million dollars state funding to modernize our regional light rail system, which is a backbone of our regional business and economic growth. California State Transportation Agency strongly suggests that SACRT needs to become more regional in order to better compete for massive amount of new state transportation funding from SB one, about fifty-five billion dollars for next ten years, and also federal funding such as President one trillion dollars infrastructure bill. Actually, I had a very good conversation with some congressional staff this morning about the one trillion dollars infrastructure bill, which likely will change in the formula and to give more funding to transit. By effectively collaborating with all regional partners, and we have made some tremendous of strides over the last three years, not just by enhancing our service and dramatically improving safety and cleanliness and rebuilding our reputation and public image. And we've also improved our financial position by saving up to fifteen million dollars within two years, by actually, in the meantime, increase some service hours. Early this year, we were ready to approach our regional partners with a proposal to apply for state grants as one unified regional transit system, instead of competing against each other for the funding. This proved to be very effective. In early this year, SACRT was awarded over one hundred forty-four million dollars, eighty-four million dollars from state fund, and another sixty million dollars from federal and other sources as a local match. This fund is going to allow us to begin our modernization of our light rail system, including double tracking of the gold line between Sunrise and historical Folsom stations, increasing light rail service frequency to fifteen minutes between Folsom and downtown Sacramento, and planning for peak-time express trains and gold line after the double tracking is completed. Today, we have a great opportunity to solidify an even stronger partnership between SACRT and the great city of Sacramento, Folsom, sorry. By entering an annexation agreement. I would like to thank Folsom City Council, Mr. Mayor, and the entire council for your visionary leadership and putting your confidence in both city and SACRT management team. And specifically, I want to thank councilmember Moran for, who has served on SACRT board for many years, and the chair last year, and has provided exceptional leadership in many important initiatives. Certainly, I would like to thank Folsom City Manager Anderson for her outstanding leadership. And the annexation process is very complicated and requires a strong dedication and leadership to make that happen. So much appreciation goes to entire Folsom city team and community partners, such as Mr. Robert Holdness and Mr. Will Kempton. I think both of them are here. Thank you very much. We have been a great partners, even since light rail extended to historical Folsom in two thousand and five. In recent years, we have continued to build on that light rail investment. In June, we secured over three million dollars to extend light rail service hours into the midnight. Looking forward, we will have even more exciting initiatives ahead of us. Just a couple examples. First, in the near future, we will work with city staff to launch our on-demand micro-transit service within the city of Folsom. Thanks to councilwoman Howard's strong support, we support and award one million dollars from Sacramento Transportation Authority specifically for city of Folsom for the micro-transit service. This, we promised we're going to not just maintain, and we will also enhance the current Dial-A-Ride service, but with this additional one million dollars for the micro-transit, we believe this will dramatically improve the Dial-A-Ride service too by allowing real-time ride reservation, and I hope and anticipate that service will be well-received by Folsom residents. Secondly, we will be modernizing our light rail system by replacing our aging vehicles with new low-floor light rail vehicles. We plan to do that in next couple of years with twenty-three new vehicles. These twenty-three new vehicles will primarily put on the gold line, and this will improve the accessibility and quality of our service. And in the meantime, we will work with city engineers to improve traffic stabilization network near light rail system.
Yay.
Thank you. Third, we will work with city staff and planners to aggressively pursue a bus rapid transit project from Folsom Transit Village to Iron Point. Furthermore, sometime early next year, we will be implementing a real-time light rail arrival information system. This means that instead of scheduled arrival time on digital boards right now, it's scheduled time, not real time, and accurate real-time arrival information will be displayed on all light rail stations. Then, should we receive additional funding in the new countywide transportation measure in two thousand and twenty, which councilwoman is in the steering committee on that initiative, we would increase bus and light rail service frequency system-wide, which include improving on fifteen-minute headwinds in and out of Folsom and enhancing stage line bus service. Certainly, the broader economy of scale after annexation will result in improved operational efficiencies that will save money and allow the region to become more competitive for federal and state grant fundings in the future. So again, on behalf of SACRT, I would like to thank Folsom City Council for the consideration and approval of this historical action item, and we look forward to many years of the wonderful partnership ahead of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Henry, before you run off. I just want to thank you for all of the hard work. And to Andy's point, the conversations actually about this started twenty years ago when I got elected. I remember being hounded consistently by Rob Kurth, who was a RT board member at the time and on the SACRT council. I think going back then, it was RT wanting to get a hold of the city's federal transit money, and every time we had that conversation, I would just walk away laughing, because RT, as you know, was a very, 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 very different place twenty years ago. In fact, it was a very different place three years ago. And I want to just show my support for you and all of your staff, and the significant changes and the dramatic improvements that RT has made in the last three years. So I'm really happy that we're having this conversation tonight. I'm thrilled that things have turned around for RT so quickly, and really, really happy to see how we can all work together to move forward and ensure that our residents get an increased level of service. I can't wait for the micro-transit to start and for those lights along Folsom Boulevard to get replaced.
Thank you very much.
Are there questions for Mr. Lee? Hey, well, don't go too far, because we're going to have some speakers first, and in case we have questions, I will have you and Dave work through those. So I got to tell you though, Mr. Lee, I echo what Andy said. If it hadn't been for you turning RT around, we wouldn't have been having this discussion consideration this evening. So congratulations, you've done an unbelievable job with RT.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So let's go ahead. We do have a number of requests to speak. If you're, you know you've got a card, she's going to name off a bunch of names, so you know you're going to be one of those speakers. When you hear your name, get in the queue, please come down from the audience to be ready so we can be efficient, because we have nine speakers for this one at three minutes apiece. That's a half an hour plus walking time and questions, so be ready. So when she calls your name, we're ready to go. Go ahead.
Okay, our first speaker tonight is Mike Barnbaum. Mike will be followed by Brian Lindy, and Brian will be followed by Indu Lula.
Maybe we should have the speakers sit up at the staff table, because there's nobody sitting there tonight.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Miklos and members of the Folsom City Council, Mike Barnbaum. And I'm pleased to support the annexation of the City of Folsom into the Regional Transit District. One of the projects I wanted to bring to your attention to add on to the comments made by Chief Executive Officer Henry Lee is the route optimization study, or the SACRT Forward Project. In the coverage scenario, one of the things, as you know, in the current existing system is that riders have to transfer currently at Main and Madison between Folsom Stage Line and Sacramento Regional Transit District. In the coverage-based scenario, the consultants from Jarrett Walker have looked to eliminate such activity by creating a seamless route over either Madison and/or Greenback from Sunrise Mall to the historic Folsom Station. So that in and of itself would be a fixed route service improvement that Folsom could see if such a thing is implemented through the deliberation and actions coming soon by the Regional Transit District Board following outreach of this very important, ongoing project right now. And if such thing happens, let me first go on record to thank councilmember Andy Moran for his hard work in bringing this to the forefront and having the discussions ongoing, and that the time is right, right now. In musical and merdureological terms, I could paraphrase and say, riders can see clearly now, the rain is gone. They can see all obstacles in their way. Gone will be the dark clouds that had them blind. There will be a bright, bright, sunshiny day. Yes, riders can make it now. The pain will be gone. All of those previous bad feelings will disappear. This and tonight's item is that rainbow they've been looking for. In the future, yes, it'll be a bright, bright, sunshiny day. I move approval.
Next speaker is Brian Lindy, who will be followed by Indu Lula, who will then be followed by Linda Davis.
Thank you for having us be able to speak. I'm honored of many people I've voted for, so it's nice to see you in action.
Thank you.
Okay, real quickly, I don't mean to be the fly in the ointment, but I beg the question, in this proposed annexation, what's in it for RT and what's in it for Dial-A-Ride? You know, it's great to talk about, you know, the things of this and that, but deep down, what's really in it for each party? So I'd like the council to at least consider those two questions. The other thing is, I've always said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Currently, I don't own a car and I don't drive. I'm on dialysis three days a week, and I rely on Dial-A-Ride to pick me up at 5:30 a.m. every morning, well, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, for a 6:00 a.m. chair time at DeVita in Orangevale, and then that's near Dairy Queen. And then they come and fix, pick me up. I'm on a fixed income. I've taken Uber and Lyft one way, and they're eight dollars one way, whereas Dial-A-Ride's four dollars one way. Now, I've heard of nightmares of paratransit being a two-hour window and waiting outside in the cold. That won't cut it for me. I don't want to wait out in the cold, and I need my 5:30 a.m. pickup time, and not 6:30, because then I miss my chair time. And if I don't have dialysis, literally, I die. I will die physically. So my thing is, if I can be guaranteed the same level of service and the same personal service where they'll pull out in front and wait for you for five or 10 minutes, and not just take off like RT would, then I'm fine with it. But I'm leery of such a change for the ability to maintain the same level of really good service I think Dial-A-Ride provides now.
Okay. We're going to answer all the questions after everyone's spoken, so we can take them all at one time.
Okay. Okay. So that's it.
Stick around.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Indu Lula, followed by Linda Davis, who will then be followed by Alice Donovan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Most of my answer, questions were answered by the gentleman who was explaining about RT and Dial-A-Ride. The Dial-A-Ride is going to remain same, and there is, everybody above 55 is eligible to ride in that Dial-A-Ride, and it'll be the same as it is now. But I'm apprehensive about the little future. But will it always continue to be like this? Or maybe after the deal is cracked, whether they will, after a few months, maybe after a year, they are going to change and then make new rules and new other things? So only that I want to know that.
Okay, we're going to answer all the questions after all the speakers have spoken this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next speaker is Linda Davis, who's followed by Alice Donovan, who will then be followed by Robert Uppham. Uppham, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. I am very concerned. I want to put it out there to see, let's suppose that you needed to get to Austin, you know, in a hurry, and you went to the airport early in the morning so you could get to your meeting on time. And you get on the plane, and you think it's going to hit Austin, and it goes to Portland, Oregon, goes to Seattle, it goes to Coeur d'Alene, goes to Vegas, goes points in Arizona, and you don't have any control over it, and you didn't know all those stops were going to be made. So you get to Austin, and you're seriously late for your meeting. And you can tell already I'm vehemently opposed to this annexation, and I'll tell you why. A couple of years ago, I had a six-hour test scheduled at UC Davis Hospital. I left my home here in Folsom at 6:00 a.m. for an 8:15 appointment. I thought two hours and 15 minutes would be plenty. I got on the bus, and, I mean, I understand a lot of people use the service, but it was one stop after another, pick people up, drop people off, pick people up, drop people off. I didn't get to my appointment until 9:00 a.m. It was three hours to get to UC Davis Hospital in Sacramento. At that point, I was there for the six hours, but everything had to be adjusted, so I missed my appointment with paratransit in Sacramento, and I waited out in front of UC Davis Hospital for three hours before a paratransit bus could come pick me up and bring me back home to Folsom. I can't express enough how much I appreciate the Dial-A-Ride service. It's been safe, it's been dependable, kind, caring people, courteous. That has not been my experience with paratransit. I lived in the Rosemont area for six years. And again, you get on the bus, you have no idea how long you're going to be on the bus. You don't know when you're going to get to your doctor's appointment. When you get there, you don't know how long you're going to be at the doctor's appointment unless you're a really good mind reader. And then when you get back on the bus again, you have no idea how long you're going to be on that bus. So I just want to close by saying sincere kudos for the Dial-A-Ride service that has been extended these last many years. I vehemently ask you to vote no on this project. I don't think it's ready. I think that the plans are in line, but I don't think the reality, the impact on the riders is going to be what has been projected. I really don't. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, your next speaker is Alice Donovan, who will be followed by Robert Uppham.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Despite what's on the card, I'm Marjorie Donovan.
My apologies.
No, no, it's fine. That's my legal name. I want to talk about a number of things about our Dial-A-Ride and about RT's paratransit system. I chose Folsom because of its bus system and Dial-A-Ride system when I retired 10 years ago from the Bay Area and moved here. I did not choose Sacramento. However, before I moved here for many years, I used Sacramento's RT system. I want to tell you some facts that you guys have not mentioned, and it's not in your report. Sacramento paratransit system is the largest, is the only system in the United States that charges the most amount of money for their riders on paratransit. The paratransit system in Sacramento has recently limited their monthly pass paratransit riders to 60 rides a month. Do the calculation. If you work, how are you going to get to doctor's appointment and grocery shopping? I happen to live in the area that I can use RT, and I do use RT, but I have to plan a whole day. I use our Dial-A-Ride system, I buy the monthly pass, I probably use it 80 or 90 times a month due to medical appointments, going to the gym, grocery shopping, et cetera. Just the other day, I was at the gym, I got a call at 1:00 from one of my doctors that someone went home sick. I was able to modify my ride by calling Justin with Dial-A-Ride, and he looked at the schedule. I was flexible to be picked up any time within the next hour, which was an hour before my ride, to go home. He was able to modify the schedule. RT will not do that. I would have been taken to that appointment, had to wait the two hours to get home. Dial-A-Ride, we spoke of part-time drivers. We have no part-time drivers. We do on the record, they all work at least 40 hours a week. This city has failed Folsom Stage Line over and over again by understaffing it, by hiring part-time people and expecting them to work full-time. We have a great system in this city. I'm able to get all of my errands done, all of my medical appointments in one day. If we go to RT, I've read the document, by the way, thanks to Lydia, our ADA coordinator, who worked tirelessly to make this document accessible. City council materials are not accessible to blind people. You put them in an image PDF file. So thank you, Lydia. Another example of our tireless workers in this city.
Marjorie, can you wrap up your comments, your times about up?
Say that again, please.
Can you wrap up your comments, your times about up, please?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I also am pretty aware that not a single city council member uses our stage line system on a daily basis, if ever at all. And it breaks my heart that you guys will be voting that will impact our lives significantly on a transit system of what you've never used. In closing, I'm aware that at least two city council members are going off this council, and I would ask this council to table this until the new city council comes in, until you've ridden the bus systems, the Dial-A-Ride system, the RT systems, so you know exactly what you're voting on, not just the business decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Robert Uppham, followed by Gwen Willison, who will then be followed by Dr. Partha Mahapatra.
Thank you. Mayor Miklos, council members. I've lived by an adage for many years, and every time I fail to live by it, I've lived to regret it. That adage is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I use Dial-A-Ride and I use RT. I've had many wonderful tours of the Sacramento area on RT. What should have taken 20 minutes, 30 minutes, has lasted well over an hour, but I've learned a great deal about Sacramento County and Sacramento City. SACRT, for many years, has wanted to take over Folsom's transit system. I see no benefit to the ridership when SACRT does, if they do, which I hope they don't. The level of service will be the same. SACRT will not be providing holiday service, which Folsom Transit does not now. They won't be providing weekend service. They do that in their other territories, but they're not going to, they're not planning to do it in Folsom. I don't know why. If Folsom riders want to go out of the city, they'll still need to transfer at the transfer point to get onto RT. That's not a benefit. RT is not proposing any new routes, nor any new schedules. No improvements. Folsom will be abandoning local control of our transit system. I don't see that as a positive. With respect to current employees, I haven't spoken to any of them, but I've read your document, and I don't see any benefit to the current employees, especially with regard to their pensions and their retirement. It's a bleak future for them. In short, I see no benefit to Folsom's ridership or to the transit system employees. So it's not broken. Don't try to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gwen Willison, who will be followed by Dr. Partha Mahapatra, who will be followed by Will Kempton.
Thank you. I just have a kind of a quick question here tonight. I attended the open house, the presentation. I thought it looked like it was a good deal, but someone mentioned, and I know that their intent was to offer all of the Folsom employees to maintain their jobs, keep their jobs, but someone mentioned that they might do so at a cut in pay. And that hasn't been verified, so I don't know, but that would not be an equitable transition for the employees. So I would like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Dr. Partha Mahapatra, who will be followed by Will Kempton.
Thank you, Mayor and the council members for giving this opportunity. I'm sorry that I was not able to attend the town hall meeting related to this because I was teaching on that particular day. Now, to paraphrase one of the speakers, I would say that when pain is not there, where will it go? So I would say that the Dial-A-Ride is working perfectly fine for the people with disabilities as well as people who cannot use the other route buses. Compared to that, as expressed by many of the other speakers, the RT system is really not working well for people with disabilities and people who need it. I am a professor in Sacramento State University, and I use the Dial-A-Ride to go to the Iron Point Station and take the light rail from there. I have never been, never had any problem getting Dial-A-Ride within the 15-minute period around the time that I've requested. I still have it on the phone, and you can verify it. On October 7th, I had made a call and to RT to book a ride from Iron Point Station to UC Davis Hospital for Monday ride. And there were eight people in queue in front of me. So it took 30 minutes to get an appointment, to schedule my ride. So that is one example. Then, when the scheduling time I had asked was, is it possible to pick me up at 9:30? Because my appointment was 11:00. I know that from the horror stories from my co-riders. I know that it takes a lot, long time to reach Sacramento using the paratransit system. Now, instead of 9:30, I was told that we don't have any, anyone to pick you up at 9:30. Either you can be picked up at 8:30, or you can be picked up at 10:30. I'd never heard of this in any of the paratransit services I've used before. I've used paratransit services in Texas, Maryland, and Kentucky. I'd never heard of it. The time you say they are supposed to come 15 minutes before or 15 minutes after, so there is a 30-minute window for the paratransit system.
If you can wrap up your comments for me.
What is it?
If you can wrap up your comments for me, your time's up.
Okay. So in short, what I would say is that at least the council members should look into some specific data before giving this decision. Is there any data from the RT services related to paratransit? What is the average waiting time when you call them? What is the average waiting time when you call them? What is the average waiting time for passengers waiting to be picked up? What is the average time if a Folsom rider is going to Sacramento? What is the average time? Now, I've heard about millions of dollars with RT services. I'm pretty sure that with good data analytics, they can give us these figures and let us compare these figures with Folsom. I can, for Folsom, I can tell you that there is zero waiting, zero waiting time when it comes to talking to someone for scheduling. There is maximum, the average time wait would be maximum, given that the window should be half an hour, right? It should be, it would be maximum, the average time would be five to 10 minutes.
Hey, Doctor, you need to wrap it up because I've already given you two extra minutes.
Yeah, so please, look into the data, compare them. If not, if you, if you want to hear us, hear us, but rap, look into the data. That would give you more insight whether this services is, and just to wrap it up, the thing is that it's too big to be concerned about the paratransit services. That is the worry. Thank you.
Okay, good points. Thank you, sir.
Your next speaker is Will Kempton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Will Kempton, representing Greater Folsom Partnership in support of the resolution. I have to say, Michael Bernbaum offered you the wording of some recent pop song. I was trying to go over in my head something that would be equally as witty and...
It's a really, really old song, though.
Unfortunately, the Beach Boys don't say anything in my, in my recollection about bus service. So this is a serious matter, and let me not joke about it. I do want to say that I had the privilege of being involved early on in the discussions that occurred recently between the city of Folsom and RT. Over the course of my career, I have been involved in a number of discussions with RT about the possibility of Folsom annexing to the district. None of those discussions in the past reflected an equal result, in my view. They were not a fair deal for the city of Folsom, and it's no wonder that the city could not ever come to an agreement, either with respect to taking care of the employees, with respect to matching the service that exists today, with respect to working collaboratively in the future with the city. As Mr. Moran and Councilmember Howell have suggested, we've seen a sea change in the attitude at the Regional Transit District over the past three years. In the early stages of the discussion, it was clear that RT was very mindful of the concerns that the city of Folsom had, and it was going to be a deal that made the city whole. Now, I didn't stay involved in the discussions all the way through, but I would applaud the city staff and the Mr. Lee's staff for working through all of the details. Now, with respect to the dial-a-ride service, it's my understanding that RT is going to operate that dial-a-ride service. It's going to be a situation where we continue exactly what Folsom has. And so I would urge you to consider that fact. You can certainly ask RT staff tonight about those circumstances, excuse me, circumstances. But I think this is really a good deal for the City of Folsom. And as Mr. Lee said, no effective and efficient transportation service begins and ends at city boundaries. We are much better as a region, and we certainly compete more effectively for state and federal funds in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
You have no more requests to speak.
Okay. I think we have a number of questions. So I think probably between Dave and Mr. Lee, if you can come down here. And as we're walking down, I think this one's for the city manager to answer. And one person brought up about the compensation for our employees, including their retirements and things. As I understand, nobody's getting a cut in pay.
Exactly. Our two primary deal points, as I shared with the Regional Transit Board last night, was that our employees were to be held completely harmless and customer service was to be, customer service levels would be maintained or increased. And certainly in terms of the employees, they are, they are ending up with equivalent or better pay and being compensated for any changes in pensions. So they're, they've been made whole and then some. And also the additional point that joining an organization like RT as a transit employee, there are frankly more career opportunities for them there, more of a career track to move up to even driving trains that we could not offer here at the City of Folsom.
Okay, yeah, I want to make sure that one came out. So, obviously, the big, the big issue is, and I'll just have Mr. Lee and probably, probably you and Andy answer this one. So, obviously, we have very successful dial-a-ride, and you know, what we're hearing is a comparison of dial-a-ride and paratransit, which, yeah, I do understand the differences. I've been in transportation for 24 years. And so what these folks would like to hear, probably from you as a general manager of RT is, and I just heard it again from Mr. Kempton, an assurance that the dial-a-ride program is going to work how it's going to work. So if you can come here and explain to them how you, how you plan on operating dial-a-ride for the City of Folsom.
Mayor, you want to speak first?
Well, yeah.
One of you?
I think it's an important distinction to make, the difference between the paratransit service and the dial-a-ride service.
There's a big difference.
There's a major difference there. One is the geography or the coverage area under the dial-a-ride services within the City of Folsom boundaries that skirt just outside into the Orange Vale. Those services will remain intact, as is no changes, with the possibility of future enhancements. The paratransit service is part of RT's regional transit service for eligible ridership. And I'll let Henry take it over from there. But under the agreement, within the agreement, specifically states that there will be no changes to the current dial-a-ride services.
Okay, so we've addressed that one. So, Henry, you want to kind of come over to the microphone so you can be on the record, please?
I'd like to actually, can I use this one?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I can, you know, direct to talk to them face to face.
Absolutely. Make sure you put it up to your mouth so we can hear you.
First, I want to wholeheartedly thank, you know, the comment provided by you guys because this is a great learning experience for me, a session for me, too. And I actually regret, you know, I should, along with my staff, should have come to you before this meeting to share with you, communicate with you what this deal is really about. So, like Elaine said, the service level will not change, will not reduce, if not increase, but we would like to increase. And also, the quality of service will remain the same and will increase, too. I don't know if you, you guys know what happened in Central Heights. They have a dial-a-ride service. Before, their daily ridership is about 30 people, 30 ridership. Now, after we work with them with the microtransit, their service, their ridership, daily ridership is 300, increased by 10 times. But I'm not saying, you know, the service you can, we're going to provide to dial-a-ride customers will increase by three, by 10 times. But what I can personally promise and guarantee that, you know, we will definitely keep our agreement, you know, with the city. Your service level will not reduce, and we will, we will try to increase on that. Secondly, paratransit service is provided by Paratransit, Inc. It's RT's vendor. You know, I'm not trying to, try to, you know, not take this responsibility, but I'm going to go back to ask Paratransit, Inc. to quickly, to improve their service quality. The comment you guys provide, I want to have a session, you know, later on to say how you guys, you know, the lost individual cases, how we can ask Paratransit, Inc. to make, you know, improvements immediately. You know, this is the first time, I, I just want to be, you know, very honest with you guys, you know, heard you, the dissatisfaction you demonstrated about the paratransit. Unfortunately, you know, we did not pay, you know, specific attention on this. We're going to, I, I will definitely try to talk to Paratransit, Inc. Hey, this, this is not going to, you know, acceptable. And especially when we take over the stage line bus service, then you guys, paratransit service associated with stage line bus service will be regional. Right now, the only customers live, you know, around library stations, tracks, are eligible for the regional paratransit service. Soon, the, you know, people, residents living, you know, within three quarters of one mile around the stage line will be eligible for that, too. So, I really want to thank you guys and, you know, for providing this valuable, you know, information for us to continue to improve. This is great. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. And then, so I think you pretty much heard from most, and one of the questions was, "What's in it for RT?" Well, I don't think it's just what's in it for RT. I think it's what's in it for the region. And as my colleagues know, because we've all done it, the competitive grant process has gotten harder and harder and harder. And, you know, as we're pushing, whether it be the Southeast Connector roadway, RT, or improvements on our freeway system and other roadway systems, you have to, you have to basically show regional benefit. And the one piece that we're missing, link within the region, is the connectivity as far as an operator within one transit system. I mean, we can go way back, as Carrie had mentioned, Andy, all, and we all know up here. We've actually kind of, sort of, had a transition to a seamless system with the Connect Card. We worked on that for the better part of 10 years, spent millions of dollars, and we're operating that now. What we're doing is we're taking out the last link that's actually kind of made a little, I don't want to say dysfunctional, but we're actually taking that link out and making it more seamless. You know, one bus going to here, one bus going to there. So I applaud it. So what these, so the question was asked, "What's in it for RT?" It's not what's in it for RT, it's what's in it for everyone, including the City of Folsom and the entire region. It's going to be funding grants, upgrades, everything. But the biggest concern I had is exactly what you folks have asked about. I did not want to see any change in the dial-a-ride service. I know we won't have a change because it's still going to be within Folsom. It's a commitment been made, it's going to be contractually obligated. So I appreciate your folks' concerns. You just heard the general manager say he's going to talk to Paratransit, Inc., try to get that kind of dysfunctionality kind of straightened out a little bit. But with you folks that are using dial-a-ride, your service is protected. There's going to be no change, you folks. In regards to employees, those questions were asked. The employees, like Elaine said, will move straight across and then some. They have much more opportunities for advancement, much more opportunities for positions we could never offer, including driving trains or scheduling trains and all those kind of fun things. And we actually talked to the employees at great length before we even took it a step further because if anyone's watched the city council and previous councils, our employees are number one operation as far as the concerns of the city council. If they weren't for this, we would not be having this discussion. So to us, that's what's in it for the employees. We're looking out for them. And then Mr. Lee and his group have guaranteed, not only, like I said, they'll move across, they'll actually get enhancements within their compensation as well as benefit packages and certainly their retirement. And I think I've pretty much covered the questions that I heard. So if I missed any, my colleagues...
I just have one other, one other comment.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I think that Elaine and I had this conversation a couple of months ago, actually, that my understanding was that the employees that currently work for the City of Folsom would also have first right of refusal on the routes in Folsom, which means...
That's correct, Councilmember Howell.
To the dial-a-ride folks, that you may not even get a different driver, you're going to have the same people.
Right. It probably end up that it is a lot of the same drivers except for those that perhaps want to pursue opportunities in the, in the broader system, but they would have the first right of refusal with, with local routes. And if I could, Mayor, I would ask that perhaps Henry could address. We have a nice, I think, relationship back and forth with our customers here, and I believe with our customers with disabilities as well. I know I've enjoyed probably a 10-year phone relationship with Margie, you know, talking about various issues over the years. And maybe, Henry, I think some of the concern might be, you know, am I going to be heard? If there's a, if there's a concern, what happens? You know, what happens if I am, you know, experiencing delays in my rides? What would be a recourse for a person with a disability or really anyone who is, you know, having a concern? How could they reach out? And how can they get in touch with a real person?
I'm going to do this very straightforward. I'm going to table all the names, you know, who are riding the dial-a-ride service. All of you guys name, or 100 people, or, you know, whatever, how many people. I'm going to locate your data, you know, what, what is your normal service, and make sure I'm going to form a task force within RT to specifically to locate the service on the dial-a-ride. Make sure whatever service you currently enjoying, we're going to make sure you're going to, you know, not affect you at all. I have my deputy CEOs and COO, my special assistant, my CFO, my, you know, treasurer. We're going to make sure, you know, to, to have a special task force to specifically, you know, handle this situation. And any concerns you have, normally, we have policy within two hours, we, we, our customer service center will be able to respond to you. But my email address is hli@heartmill@sacrt.com. I, I read my email every 15 minutes. So, once I get you guys, you know, sending me an email, I'm going to, you know, make sure we're going to address that quickly. That, that is something I can definitely do.
Well, you know, Margie asked whether or not any of us in the council actually ride road to experience what you all experienced. Well, in the last three weeks, I came close to doing that because I wasn't seeing too well, and I was a hazard to be on the road. It's better right now. So I almost did experience. Now, when we had the first data come to most of us that weren't directly involved, now Andy has been more involved than Carrie from way back when, but I'm sure me and Roger have been not that involved. And when we had our first briefing in the closed session, I personally was, was a little bit concerned because I enjoy a city that's a full-service city, and that's what we've been. And I didn't really want to give it up. And it was explained that just what Mr. Lee said, we would, our employees would be taken care of. They would not suffer anything. That, that was part of before, we even said we would talk to RT. And that the service would be equal, if not better than what you're getting. Of course, I'm not, haven't heard anything about RT before because I didn't have the opportunity or necessity to use it. I get real, now I'm a little bit conflicted because I'm hearing where a man could die if we take him all over for an excursion tour. I, that, it rings a bell with me. I know missing schedules, this throws the whole thing into upside down. And possibly, over the years, that we have done the job, and sometimes Folsom is a victim of their own expertise in that they do create a level of expectation and high service, which I am not advocating to change anything of that. But when we do, and then we pass it to another agency and expect them to immediately transfer over, it's easy to transfer money. It's easier to transfer routes and type of service. And it's nice to know we, the employees have opportunities more than what we offer here because of our size. But it's not necessarily that easy to build up the confidence. I came in here very easily, ready to vote for this because I felt that, from what I've been told, that all the, everything we asked RT to do was going to be done. Now, I'm a little concerned, and I'm going to have to think very hard on this. First thing that comes to my mind when, when we get a conflict like this, I'm, I'm inclined to say, "Give me a trial period." Now, I don't know if within the legal grounds that's even possible because of liability. I don't know. But it's pretty hard to step out into the dark and assume the lights are going to come on like they should. I'd like to try the system to see if the system works a little bit to our advantage. And I'm not criticizing RT. I have no way of reviewing it. I do know from experience that we got on the council that in past years, we wouldn't be wasting anybody's time. If it was six, eight years ago, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be at this meeting. But you did a great job, and our indications are going to continue to do it. I hope that transfers down to the actual grunts in the system. No, systems can be done well on procedures. Managing and senior executives, they can write the best plans based on their experience in it, but the man that's doing it or the lady that's doing it has to execute the system to keep it at a high level. Mr. Lee can't do it, his staff can't do it. You can direct it, but it takes time. And it sounds like maybe our system here in Folsom has achieved that level. And therefore, all the users are happy and expect this. It makes a conflict for me, and I'm sure, now that we've heard this everybody else. So to tell you the truth, I'm not sure which way I want to go tonight. I hate to make a change in the road, but I'm not, I'm not willing to go into the roadblock being blind with some concerns. And I haven't heard them yet, okay, until tonight. This is the first time I actually, I may have heard Margie say a few things now, but other than that, I haven't heard the other concerns. But having this spell that I ran through for the last three weeks, I had to stop and think, "What if I have to have someone take me around or have to be..." It's scary. When you're, all your life, you can handle it yourself. So I, I'm emphasizing with the people that have to use the rides to get around and have a full life, and that's what you should want. And we should hear, I know we're here, we want to do that. How we do it, that's, we're going to have to talk about. So, I'm not casting any dispersions on RT. I know Andy does a great job for us on that board and has. But I'm not quite sure yet. So I think I'm going to have to sit and hear the rest of the comments before I make any more decisions on my part in my vote. Because we pride ourselves, I do what I've done all the years I've been here. If it's a tie, it goes to the people that's involved and affected by whatever we're talking about. Okay? Not that I discourage the other people or make them look bad. I'm not, that's not my role. My role as this, sitting up here in this job, is to be sure the people that we owe it to, Folsomites, gets that concern. So right now, I'm at the middle of an island, trying to figure out which way to jump in or stay on the island. So I'm going to just listen a little bit more before we have to make a vote. But, and it's not any dispersions to, to RT. Everything I've heard, you've done a great job, you and your staff. But maybe we're not ready, maybe we need a trial basis, if that's possible. I don't know. We have legal brains to direct this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to some of that. Roger?
So, thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Mr. Lee. You've done a great job, and I like your, your, the way you've been, the way you approached this is very well. And I know you've been working really well with staff. And I... this is very well, and I know you've been working really well with staff, and I appreciate everything that's gone into it. As a teen in Folsom, and a broke 18-year-old that ran, I took stage line quite often, although I never had any medical conditions and didn't rely on it for any kind of emergency, you know, like the dial-a-ride, or, you know, paratransit. Prior to the meeting, I did look up some reviews of paratransit, and some of the concerns that you addressed are actually on there, they're very visible. So, without denigrating the package, the structure, and the work you've all put in, I would like to see, maybe, and I was kind of mentioning this, but maybe some sort of commission put together that addresses all of these issues, and working with your staff, to ensure that, you know, the confidence level of the folks that this affects, you know, most of them sitting in here, are addressed and upfront, and ready to roll prior to flipping the switch on this. Because I don't like relinquishing control. I like the small-town feel. That's why we have Folsom Fire, that's why we have Folsom PD, we're not Sacramento Metro, although we partner very well with everybody in the region. I like to have Folsom be Folsom. I'm not sure I'm ready for Folsom RT. I like having this, but then again, there are a lot of benefits, and I'm sure the Folsom Way is going to make a video of me flip-flopping on this, so. The, having those benefits, they mean a lot, and being a regional partner, I would just like to see that partner go more in-depth and address all the concerns, and formulate that kind of commission, if you will, before moving forward. So, that's just kind of my thoughts on it.
Yeah, where I want to jump in on some, like perhaps maybe miscommunication, misinformation. We operate dial-a-ride, we don't operate paratransit. So, what I was hearing from the folks that are having issues getting around Sacramento is, once they leave our system, Paratransit, Inc. is not RT. But the general manager from RT, obviously, is going to have a conversation with another organization. And that's very, very important, because, again, our dial-a-ride service is not changing. As he shared, it's not only not going to change, he's going to get individuals, schedules, peoples, who they are, and see how we can possibly even make it even better. So, within our boundaries, nothing's changing. What we heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard differently, all the horror stories I heard was, once they leave our system, it's a system that's not RT, it's Paratransit, Inc.
No, it's the, I'm saying, I'm aware of the differentiating factors of both, I'm saying the sub is still a sub of RT, and then when this does happen, if it does, Folsom becomes a sub of RT. So, the management component of that, nothing against RT, I'm just saying there's some issues that I think need to be worked out from that aspect, that I don't want to transfer into the same component of Folsom becoming RT. Does that make sense?
You know, I'd like to, if you mind-
Yeah, no, go ahead.
If I was these people riding the bus, and I had a problem, I think we, they would know, and they should know, they'd come back to the mother lode, and that's the city of Folsom and us, to interject in your behalf to wherever the problem is. Okay?
Still will.
If, well, I don't know, if they still will, I'm all for it. But if there's a dark spot there, where now they have to go to RT to interject themselves as, on the problem, I don't know if we're ready for that yet. I don't know.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, no, I definitely hear what you're saying, and as I said, I mean, you have, you, I don't want to say a break in the system, you're trying to compare paratransit, which is a whole different type of routing system, to a dial-a-ride, which is a person-specific system. So, whether it's cleaned up as a sub to RT, or whether it's somehow connected interconnected with us, and some, it already is. But you're comparing apples to oranges, and no disrespect intended by anybody out here that uses it. Dial-a-ride is very specific to a singular-type person's, paratransit does carry more than one person, and it's known that there could be more than one stop. Now, I don't disagree that it's not realistic, and I think the general manager just gave his word to these folks, that that's the first he's going to do, is clean up that issue, because, again, we don't know it's broke until people share with us, and he now knows that there's some issues with paratransit, and how he can make that more seamless with everything going forward. Like I said, he's given personal emails, he's taken names and numbers and whatnot. So, our system within the limits are still good. We now have a general manager who's dialed in completely, where there's a little issues with paratransit, so I'm, again, this is me, my 24 years speaking here, of dealing with all these systems for so many years, especially the Connect Card thing for, what, 10, 12 years now, something like that? I think, to me, again, not to sound disparaging using the word we've all used up here, it's apples and oranges in the type of systems, but doesn't mean we can't fix the one that's a little bit dysfunctional, which is the one that's Paratransit, Inc., that obviously works with Henry. So, yeah, go back to, yeah, you need to come to the microphone.
I'll make one comment. This annexation is going to continue to be working together relationship. We already planned, we're going to have a monthly, if not weekly, you know, meeting between the city staff and the RT staff, to make sure everything is going smoothly, not just from beginning and in the future. So, that is still going to be a partnership. Secondly, city council is going to have a representative in RT board. This board member will have 10 votes out of 100 votes. Right now, it's just three votes, because we use the wait system. We're working with other two cities, try to make that happen next board meeting in two weeks. Centrus High, we're going to have the annexation agreement for board and council, Centrus High Council to approve. And then Elgro, we're going to work with them on that, too. The reason we want to move this forward, because a lot of reason is, there's a lot of funding, you know, potential available from state, starting from January. We would like to continue to apply for some fund. Right now, you know, out of $144 million, the state gave us 84 million, and the $60 million has come from the local match, and we're still, even though the local match, you know, we identified potential sources, we still needed to continue to iron that down, to make that a whole. So, that's why we would like to make something happen, you know, now, and if we wait, we may have some difficulty to, you know, to secure those funds. Because the state, you know, transportation agency was very clearly want us to be, you know, partner, working together.
And while you're standing there, to Councilman Gaylord's, you know, comment about a commission, I think I just heard you say early on, that you're committing tonight a task force to specifically address the concerns of the connectivity between our dial-a-ride folks, and certainly paratransit system, and certainly the paratransit system as a whole. Did I hear that correctly?
Absolutely, you know, tomorrow, I'm going to on that. And we, we're proud, you know, to be, you know, be able to address issue quickly, and to be the satisfaction of our customers. And we will make sure that will happen, starting tomorrow.
And I appreciate that. I'd like to just see this as a vote after that happens, so like, address those, maybe not even, maybe two council meetings from here, address those concerns, work with the residents that have issues. I haven't heard one positive resident comment yet. I've heard five or six that have issues with the current service that they've been through, and I don't use that service, I can only rely on, you know, the citizens that testify here to tell me, as a council member, you know, where my focus should be. So, I'd just like to see that come first, prior to saying, well, we have funds to search for in January, let's just move this forward, and then we'll circle back and reach out. With all due respect, I believe you will reach out, you seem very, you know, cordial and honest and open, and, you know, direct with the residents. I just, in my opinion, and we can move forward after that, I just, I feel like it should be just a little longer to build that relationship, earn their trust, and then you earn the trust of the community, because you made that commitment to do that, and you built that foundation with those folks who rely on this for their lives.
We have a time constraint, and before you answer it, in other words, could we bring it to our second meeting in November for potential action, and gives Mr. Lee 30 days to work with his task force and these folks?
Can I ask a question?
I'd like to answer that one first, please.
Good question, good question.
I don't think we're dealing with a particular timeframe, you know, unless, you know, Mr. Wong or Mr. Nugent disagree. I think that this, we could allow a 30-day period and bring it back with results from your task force and your research.
Carrie?
I just want to, I just want to be completely clear here. So, what I heard you say earlier is that dial-a-ride in Folsom will remain exactly as it is now?
If not better.
Okay, so, is, so, just to clarify, because all the complaints that we've heard so far tonight, had nothing to do with dial-a-ride, they were all to do with paratransit. So, if dial-a-ride in Folsom is going to remain as it is, does that mean that dial-a-ride in Folsom will be operated by direct RT employees as opposed to paratransit employees?
It's directed by RT employees, and very likely, the employees, you know, right now providing this service, they will stay here to continue-
Right, so they will be RT employees as opposed to city employees. The point being, all of the complaints have been with the paratransit system. If the people that we're talking about that operate the dial-a-ride system in Folsom are basically going to be separate from paratransit-
Absolutely, yes.
-then I see that, you know, going back to Steve's point a while ago, if there's a connectivity issue between dial-a-ride and paratransit, that's kind of going to be on, it's going to be an issue that RT and paratransit need to work out, but the problems with paratransit are not going to bleed into Folsom, and the dial-a-ride is going to remain as it is today, if not improve.
That's, that is absolutely accurate.
Okay.
So, on that point, though, with, and sorry for my third-grade drawings here, but it would essentially be this, right? RT, paratransit, when they have issues, they go back to RT, right? As your sub?
We will definitely try to ask them to improve the quality of service.
But my point being, and I'm not trying to prove anything wrong, I'm just saying the structure as it is, paratransit's managed by its own company, because they're a sub of RT, but when there's issues with that company, it goes back to RT, right? Folsom, Stageline, and Dial-a-ride will be its own kind of thing going on, that's not going to change, but when they have issues, they go back to the same place that paratransit with current issues goes back to, right?
It's, paratransit is a completely separate company, and that's not what we're talking about here.
At the end of the day, it's managed by RT, and the issue I have, is that folks have an issue with that service-
Not managed by RT.
Not managed by RT.
Paratransit is a sub of RT.
It's not a sub, but they do, you know-
They're a contractor.
They're a contract, that's true.
So, it's basically subcontractor for that service.
It's not managed by RT. And what the contractor's saying, if you want to look at it that way, is, they now know there's issues, and I'll use the analogy of when we had the issues with the parking structure, and the company we had. We are the ones that hired them, we have an issue, we told them about the issue, they cleaned it up. He now knows of an issue with paratransit, he doesn't get to make the single decision, but he is going to go to paratransit and let them know there's some issues. It's a separate company.
I'm just saying, the accountability lies on RT, which I guarantee you will go back and, I trust your word, and I trust this, I actually trust this agreement, I really liked the structure of what this is and how it looked. I've seen Margie's comments, I've not commented to her on purpose, I wanted to make sure, you know, I just see that, I've seen some of the reviews and stuff with that. So, my point is, and I'm not just going back, but I just want to see, like you said, if we can kick it down a little bit, and you build that relationship, and form that task force, and prove that, facilitate that relationship, I guess I'm saying, and then come back and vote, I'd be happy with that. But if that's not the case, then-
So, Henry, what timeline works for you? Can two weeks, 30 days, bring it back? Does it give you enough time to do the things you want to, talk to paratransit, meet with these folks?
I will start to talk to them tomorrow, but two weeks, or, you know, three weeks, I would definitely have something, you know.
Well, our next meeting is the second Tuesday in November, and the meeting after that is the fourth Tuesday in November, so one of those, so I'll let you communicate with Elaine, so I'll move to continue off calendar, and let the city manager and the RT manager select a date after the direction we've already given you folks to bring it back.
Thank you. My comment right now, as we sit here tonight, is, I don't want to see our dial-a-ride ever get incorporated into paratransit. I've been hearing problems about paratransit for a long time, and I see no possibility that you're going to get the paratransit situation, given that you guys don't control it, straightened out in a 30-day time period, so.
Yeah, I think what we're dealing with, and it's certainly not your problem, I don't want to cast it that way, but we're dealing with an agency that they had bad experience with. And what we're saying on this, up here, that may or may not change unless you're persuasive and can make them change. In other words, whatever horror stories they had, they're going to continue to have them, unless some other intervention. But I think the intangible concern on the part of the riders here, are you going to deliver and not have two problems on their hands? Right now, they only have one problem, that's after they get out of the area. Okay? And I'm confident, you will deliver, but I think that's what we're dealing with.
No, and you framed it exactly correctly. I'm confident that interiorly, we're fine. And if you don't do this annexation, they still got a problem with paratransit. So, I think we had the rare opportunity, we had the CEO of the largest provider of public transportation standing in front of us, saying, and making a commitment to all public, and send their official minutes, he's going to work with you, he's going to talk to paratransit, I'm allowing him the flexibility with our city manager to bring it back at the appropriate time for further discussion and a potential action. Before we go any further, I know Councilmember Moore wanted to jump in.
Yeah, just, you know, I've kind of been a point piece on a lot of these issues, and I have a bunch of notes written down here, but a lot of that has been discussed. As far as the folks who came here to speak today, I would have been disappointed if you weren't here, sharing your apprehension. You know, it's important that you folks were here, shared what you rely on. I'm always happy to hear about great service the city of Folsom is delivering, so thanks for coming here and sharing that, and also your defense of the employees of the city of Folsom. So, again, thanks for coming out and sharing that. You know, it's been heard loud and clear up here, and again, I would have been disappointed if I hadn't heard that. What we're discussing here is actually a great example of what regionalism can do. You know, we're already hearing additional commentary that we wouldn't otherwise hear at our regional transit board meetings related to dissatisfaction with the paratransit service. So, when you build a larger constituency base related to better regionalism, but it has to be good regionalism, it forces change along those lines. And just to clarify, you know, kind of the relationship between paratransit and regional transit, paratransit does have its own board. So, when people do have complaints, they'll go to that board, we certainly hear that at the regional transit board, issues we've been working on for a while, and I know Henry's got some plans going forward to improve that. Has been articulated, I think, very well by concerns shared by, you know, all of us up here, but specifically Roger and Ernie, is, you know, going forward, you know, what are our assurances related to equal or greater service already enjoyed, but as we heard, depended upon by residents of the city of Folsom? And I guess my suggestion, and, you know, I don't want to rush this, if people need something, you know, this, you know, this was just brought to this board. When Ernie mentioned speaking in closed session, we could only speak in closed session related to the employee issues. So, that was first and foremost, very important, that we had their buy-in related to this, is this going to work for them? They would be here if it did not work for them. So, that was very important, and I thank Elaine for, you know, sharing that note there. So, what happened yesterday at the regional transit board meeting is, this agreement was approved unanimously by the regional transit board, conditional on approval of this board. So, that action will remain kind of as a placeholder, again, dependent on the action here for this, this board here, us five on the Folsom City Council. A suggestion I would have, and maybe, you know, Ernie, or Henry and Elaine can kind of work to this end, I have no problem kind of with the right, I don't know, the right connections being made as far as, again, assurances, you know, down the road, specifically related to dial-a-ride, is, we do have a number of transit advocacy groups in the region. There's a mobility council, and I, and I know Margie and others are probably familiar with this, and Margie, I didn't know Alice was your given name, so it's good to learn something here. But, but, you know, I almost see as maybe the direction on this could be having a Folsom Mobility Committee/Commission, relatively informal, but meeting and connecting regularly, almost as an intermediary between what we do up here, as far as a member of the regional transit board, but also connecting to Sacramento Regional Transit. And a lot of times, that can really help facilitate very quick resolution to concerns and issues that come up, and there's power in numbers. It's not just Margie, or not just Brian, it's a group of people that'll have a greater voice. So, I actually feel that there's- So I actually feel that there's probably a chance with some of that working relatively quickly, that we couldn't bring this back, you know, at our next meeting, because, you know, we've chewed on a lot of this dialogue, and if we can, if we can work with, you know, the nine folks that showed up here today with their concerns and, you know, again, try and formulate some mechanism to give them assurance of, you know, really some real attention. And I know, you know, I've been on the Regional Transit Board, I've seen the incredible improvements, but these folks haven't. And I think if there were just this added mechanism where, again, there's a Regional Transit Board member from this body, but in addition to that, kind of Folsom's go-to group, where these are the Folsom Transit Advocates, and what kind of job are we doing? Is there attention that needs to be placed in a certain area? So as much as I'd like to see this move along this evening, I am in no mood to rush something that I know can be fixed with some assurances, and so I do respect the concerns of my colleagues up here to just kind of get a little more information and, again, working with, you know, I think the fine example of folks that took the time to come here today to express their concerns. So that would be kind of my suggestion, Mr. Mayor, along with your motion, is to, you know, maybe, I'm not sure exactly what form that would take, I look at it as being relatively informal, but frequently, frequent meetings that, you know, the appropriate people are in the room, so folks, you know, like Lyndon, Margie slash Alice can, you know, quickly feel connected in both directions, because, you know, this is new. And as I shared last night, this will be my final thought, is, and I truly believe this, in the right situations, there can become a greater good with a regional effort. And City of Folsom has been mentioned up here, we're very proud of our full-service, independent nature. In this instance, I do believe that this helps the region enough, Folsom can't be any greater than the region gets. We can both bring each other up, and I truly believe the right regional transit, you know, in Portland, it's not Gresham Transit and Portland Transit and things like that, they really have created regional transit, but it has to be done right. And Henry's the guy that, along with his team, and there are a lot of them back there, we could almost have a Regional Transit Board meeting right now with all the right staff here, but I want to thank everybody for working so hard on this. I feel in my heart of hearts we can get there with everybody gaining greater comfort. So thanks for, Henry, your work, and everybody on the Regional Transit Team and Elaine and David and, you know, all sorts of folks that have been working on this. We're good and close, but I appreciate the concern shared, Ernie and Roger.
I just want to add to Andy's suggestion about the committee, or whatever you want to call it, but I think that could be an excellent tool for you to work with Paratransit.
Yes.
And say, look, this is how Diloride works in Folsom, why doesn't Paratransit work this way?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, my comments weren't to tell you to go fix Paratransit for this to happen, my comments are along the lines of what Andy was saying, forming a commission internally with folks this actually affects. So you stated it perfectly, Councilmember Moore, so thank you for that. And I just want to make sure that was clear, so that was my biggest hesitation, was building that relationship and trust and having that transition into, you know, the regional partner that we could be, so.
Yeah, so that's the reason I made the motion to continue off calendar, because I'm going to leave it up to the manager and Mr. Lee to figure out all the items that we've discussed up here and the timing accordingly, if you can have it done in two weeks. I think those folks would breathe a lot easier, as soon as the better, but as the same token, I don't want to rush it until we actually have some good, solid, concrete comfort level, not only with our folks here, with you and certainly our city manager, but if you guys think you can do everything and have a situation or a process in place, then certainly bring it back when the manager and you agree, and we'll bring it back.
We'll work with Ina and her staff and quickly work on this and then bring it back.
And I want to thank all the residents, all the people that, like Andy said, have spoke this evening, because again, we don't know what goes outside of our borders, this is an excellent opportunity to fix the rest of the system. And you couldn't ask for better people than the general manager we have standing in front of us, because I've seen them, all the GMs that run that thing the last 24 years, and we have an extreme diamond standing in front of us, if not platinum, whatever. But I'm confident that Mr. Lee will fix it, and to the people that ask me, other than Diloride, yes, I have ridden the transit system many, many times, the buses, the light rail, and I couldn't say that in the past, as far as the light rail, I use it quite often now, just because of what you've done. And I think our buses are second to none in what they do, and certainly I know our Diloride as well. So you guys have been heard loud and clear, and I think that what you're hearing from the City Council this evening is we're going to make sure you continue to be heard loud and clear and taken care of. So anyway, the motion is to move to continue off calendar. Any a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I'd just still like to see it sooner rather than later, because this is going to have a significant effect, I think, on funding opportunities for the region.
Yeah, no, I.
We're going to take a good shot at that first November meeting.
Okay. That would be my preference, because if we still have a few more bugs to work out, we've still got one more. So, caller on the item, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, we are going to take 10 minutes, because I know we've got another big item in front of us with lots of speakers, and some of us up here need to move around and stretch as well, so thank you again, everybody, and we'll be back in 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and turn the mic back on. Sorry, I should have said something to you. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the Folsom City Council meeting, as the clerk please call the next item.
Okay, your next item this evening is item 8C. This is a public workshop on parking concerns in the residential portion of the historic district and to provide direction to staff.
Okay, so before we get going, there's a couple of things I wanted to address and make sure there's no confusion about this evening, because last time we had a workshop, public perception was we were going to take a vote and it's an action item. First of all, this is agendized as a workshop, workshop only, there will be no action as far as an actual city council vote on anything this evening. As we go through this thing, we'll obviously probably give direction to the manager in some form or fashion, residents and business owners and city folks all alike. You know, what I always like to say is, you know, we do pay a great deal of attention to the historic district, always have, and I hope after I'm long gone, everybody always will. I mean, the perfect example is what we did when we got together as a community, and I'd like to suggest the same process as we go through this this evening, is we got the residents together, the businesses together, the city as a whole together, city staff together. We saw things like the light rail station, that was obviously initially opposed, we solved the issues with the parking structure when those were coming up, we solved a huge issue for most everybody, businesses especially residents, which was the Tuesday night entertainment issues and brought the street down to a, now everyone's on the same rules and playing field. So we do genuinely care, extreme, extremely I should say, and we always move with extreme caution before anything is done, because we've never had an overriding consensus on most issues down there. The three I just referred to was a very strong consensus, and I think it went through a very viable process in relationship between the residents, the businesses, and the city residents as a whole, because everybody's voice is included. This is not going to be a city council only thing, we're not going to not include the people. I mean, I've heard candidates say, people, not politics, this is a people thing, and so, Mark, you're going to start off the presentation for a fact, we're not going to rush into anything, but I really want to make this real clear and real clear from the very onset. You know, I've gotten just lots of communication wanting to know why we're doing this political maneuver this evening. I want to say this is not a political maneuver, this is something that we promised the residents on a regular, continuous basis that we would review. And knowing that Mr. Moore and I retired at the end of the year, it was more than appropriate after the manager and I went through the agendas of items we had to take care of with the City of Folsom. We had some very serious things that we had to pass, we're time-sensitive, including the updated general plan, and with the concurrence of the vice mayor, because we communicate regularly, we're able to land on this date. So I apologize for being late in the year, better late than never, but the good news is you have historical knowledge as you will, have some new knowledge as well, and you'll have another council coming in here in a couple of months. So again, this is not a political maneuver, so anybody who's going to come up here and play politics, I'm going to shut your microphone off, because I don't want anybody in the city to be offended by anyone trying to do politics up here over something that has nothing to do with it. It has to do with our historic district, and we're going to keep it focused on historic district. Yes, we do, you know, have some people's stuff, some concerns about parking, but I want to hear everything, similar to what we just heard with RT. If there's other things existing out there, we want to hear it. You know, we want to be able to address it, because then as these workshops go forward, or whatever process that people agree on later on down the line, we want to be able to address everything. So again, there will be no vote, this is not an action item on the agenda, it's a workshop only, so and if the reporters are out there taking notes, just make it very clear, the city council's not not making a decision, a double negative, I love those, it's because it's not agendized as one. I would never, ever put anything on the agenda as an immediate workshop with, excuse me, as an action item for something we haven't even discussed, when we will not go back on our promises, and again, we've done it many, many times, that we were going to have lots of communication to address something that's very near and dear to everyone in this city of almost 80,000, which is our heritage, our heritage started in the historic district. So with that moving forward, Mr. Rackavan, lead us off this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mark Rackavan, your engineering manager with the Public Works Department. This evening, I just have a brief presentation to provide you with some background on the various parking studies that your staff has performed over the years in the historic district, provide you with some updated information on parking supply and utilization in the district. We start talking about some strategies for addressing issues in the residential area, and we also have some projections for future demand and supply in the historic district. So first, the problem statement that was conveyed to staff, that the issue that we're really trying to tackle this evening with this workshop are the influx of employees and visitors to the commercial portion of the district, starting to really infiltrate more into the residential area, taking up available on-street parking. This has been an ongoing issue primarily during weekend peak periods and special events, but now what's being reported is this is happening more frequently on more of a regular basis, and again, extending into the nighttime hours and all the associated nuisances that go along with that, whether that be, you know, the noise of people slamming car doors or starting their vehicles in late hours, or the behavior of some of the individuals that are returning to their vehicles. Some background, just I'll touch on this lightly, we've been studying parking in the district for about 20 years, going all the way back to when we did the original studies that decided to place the parking structure in the railroad block and replace the big surface parking lot that we used to have there. We then started studying where the next parking structure should go, and then as we realized, and certainly as the RDA was dissolved and kind of put a crimp in our plans for a second parking structure, we started looking more towards parking management strategies. So these are the various studies that have been done, up to and including the one that we completed just this past few weeks. So just to highlight what the most recent parking studies in 2008, 2014, they did show that there is an adequate parking supply overall in the historic district, even once the railroad block is fully developed out. But what has also showed is that a lot of that parking, particularly the parking structure and the two light rail lots down at the end of Liedestorf, are very underutilized. They did, of course, confirm that as the district grows, and certainly as our community grows, we are going to run short on parking in the historic district, and we will need a second parking structure, I think that's no surprise to anyone. Those studies also identified some near-term and long-term parking management strategies, many of which have already been implemented, such as the time limits on the on-street parking in the commercial portion of the district. We have found a few places to add some additional parking, we changed the management of the parking in the parking structure itself. Some of the long-term strategies, of course, have not been fully implemented because they do tie to a second parking structure, or because they require going to a step of things like permit parking in the residential area. But again, these are subjects for today's workshop. So the current parking supply, and this is focusing again in just the commercial portion of the district, and you'll see that our consultant, Kim Lee Horn, has broken the parking up into three zones. The first one being everything essentially east of Riley Street, where we have a little under, about 180 parking spaces, 51 on-street, and then about 130 in parking lots and structures, and that's primarily the lot that's at the corner of Riley and Scott, and the parking that's in the gas and light building, or excuse me, the power and light building where the steakhouse is located. Zone two, bounded between Riley and Wool, this is primarily the Trader's Lane parking lot, and then the on-street parking on Liedestorf and Sutter. Zones one and two make up a little bit under half of the available public parking in the district. Zone three is primarily the parking structure, and then a couple of temporary lots at the corner of Sutter and Wool, and on Liedestorf across from Karen's Bakery, and the on-street parking. You'll note that these zones do not include the light rail park and ride lots, because those are devoted to light rail parking during the day, they are available after 5:00 for public parking, and of course, on weekends. And these zones also don't include privately-owned parking lots, such as the very large parking lot that's in front of the Lake Natoma Inn, because that is specifically set aside for the patrons of that shopping center. One thing I will note that, as I go into the actual usage numbers that we collected in the past few weeks, the north park and ride lot was fenced off because of a construction project, and so unfortunately, that has displaced some of the people that would have normally parked there during the weekday, and you'll see that's reflected in some of the numbers for the parking structure. Also, I would note that the 801 total parking spaces that you see here in the public parking supply is down five from the 2014 study, and that was simply the loss of five on-street parking spaces on Liedestorf associated with the Bike Boulevard project that's under So this is, again, focusing strictly on the off-street parking, because the on-street parking is generally taken up and used all day long, and it's, it is time-limited, so people are coming and going all the time. But looking at the parking structure and the surface parking lots that are owned and maintained by the city, you can see here, zone by zone, we're seeing high utilization of all of our off-street parking. These are numbers that are done, you know, during a typical weekday, from 6:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening. Things that I would highlight here, actually, starting with zone three, as I just mentioned, those numbers, you can see that there's a very significant increase in the use of essentially the parking structure. But again, a lot of this is tied to the unavailability of that north park and ride lot. Once that lot is open again, you know, the use of the parking structure should drop by about 20, 25% under normal conditions. Looking at zones one and two, clearly you'll see that we're at capacity during much of the day, certainly during the evening, early evening hours, the dinnertime hours. I think part of, this is contributing to part of the problem that was in the statement, people are arriving and taking up the parking in that area to the east of Wool Street, starting around 6:00, 7:00 in the evening, and when people arrive later on, you know, either for dinner or employees showing up in the district, they're finding that that parking is taken up, and so their first reaction is to go into the adjacent residential areas and leave their vehicles there for the evening, and that's what's being. And that's what's being reported to us, and I think that's also trickling down, further down Sutter Street towards Decatur and Wool, and into that area. By contrast, here's the weekend peak, so we're talking about Friday nights, Saturday nights, and again, the data collection is strictly from six to nine, or those hours during the dinner rush, and as people are starting to arrive for the evening. Again, zones one and two are essentially at capacity, and that is, again, causing people to disperse into the residential areas. They're not heading over to the parking structure, you know, we're looking at only twenty-five, thirty percent use of the parking structure on our weekends. The park-and-ride lots, which are right across the street from them, are basically empty at that same time. So the same problem that was identified back in those two thousand and eight, two thousand fourteen studies of underutilization of the parking structure and the light rail lots, that's, that's part of our problem to this day. So right now, I'll just turn the presentation over to Chris Gregerson from Kim Lee Horn to walk you through what the future supply and demand situation is looking like, and then as soon as Chris is done, I'll come back up and we'll start talking about potential strategies for addressing these issues in the residential area.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I'm Chris Gregerson at Kim Lee Horn, and I worked on this study. So as Mark mentioned, I'm gonna talk about the future conditions, and to work on the, to do the future conditions, we worked on the parking model that we used for the previous studies as well, updated based on the existing conditions we just went over. So the, in combination with the existing conditions, we used a future land use that was provided by the city, and this future land use comprised the existing land use, some of the pending and approved projects, primarily the historic Folsom Station projects, some of the retail that we assumed as part of the Trader Lane structure, that I'll get into later, and then a mix of just future development based on the current land use mix. So as you can see on the graph, the, the two main lines are parking demand and parking supply, starting today, in October of two thousand and eighteen, on the left, and then projected out another ten years. So you can see today, overall, so this is on and off-street parking, we're about at sixty percent occupied, and within four years, we'll get to roughly ninety percent occupied. And that number's important, because we call that the, the practical capacity, so basically, it's not full capacity, but it'll take someone, you know, a significant amount of time to try and find a parking space, due to various issues. And so this, the development between today and roughly four years from now are just the full development of those pending and approved projects. And so really, you're kind of reaching a point where if you're not offering more supply, it's gonna kind of hinder some of that future development, because of the demand that's associated with that development. And then so, as far as the Trader Lane structure, previously, we had used the demand to inform the time, but due to various constraints such as funding, we had to make an assumption about when the construction would start, so six years from now is when that assumption was given to us by the city, and we assumed a twelve-month construction. So that includes the loss of the hundred and sixteen parking spaces currently there at the Trader Lane lot, so then, once it is constructed, you're getting a net gain of roughly three hundred and twenty-six spaces. But as you can see, due to some of the, if we assume continuous development, if it's not constrained after four years, you're still at an eighty percent capacity, once that is constructed. If we go out further to ten years, we hit that practical capacity again. So just some of the takeaways is, you know, today, we're already at sixty percent occupancy, and if no additional supply is given, you'll reach to your practical capacity in roughly four years, and then by adding the new parking structure, you add about six years of development from that four-year to the ten-year timeline. Thank you.
So now, as we transition into discussion of strategies, really, these are just broad categories for us to stimulate some ideas, and hopefully, get us all pointed in a direction that you can have us do some additional work for you. If there's additional data that you need beyond what we've shared with you this evening, you know, ask for that as well, and we can, we can get that added into our, our scope of work, and get back to you with anything you need to help, you know, lead to a strategy as we move forward. So the four areas I want to spend some time on, for the next few minutes, the subject of time limits has been brought up, to post two or three, extend the existing two, two and three-hour time limits that we have in the commercial area, extend those into the residential area. Permit parking is always brought up, and certainly needs to be touched on. We'll also spend some time on wayfinding and parking management strategies.
Mark, when we spoke on Friday, I understood that PD was gonna help out and try to get some information from the license plate readers, did we get any data back from that yet, or what's the plan for that?
We have, yeah, what we did was, we asked the police department to, you know, have a, have an officer use their license plate reader and go through, you know, a few designated streets in the historic district, residential district, to see if we could figure out where those folks were coming from, whether they were, you know, residents of the district or outside the district. We have some very preliminary data that the chief actually just showed me, you know, just a few minutes ago, it's not analyzed, it's also pretty unscientific at this point, because we really need to repeat this over, you know, several, several weekends ideally, we need to, you know, have it occur when there's a major event in the district, for example, it's just, you know, I think it would be very premature to share that at this time, but that would be a good way to kind of get a sense of who is parking where down the road.
Okay. So time limit parking, so this, there's nothing particularly scientific about this graphic, you know, what, what I tried to indicate here is obviously, you know, defining where the commercial district is, which is, you know, where, you know, some of the parking demand is spilling out of. What I did try to indicate with the, kind of the heat lines are, you know, the areas that are probably experiencing the most overflow now, in close proximity to the commercial area.
Thank you for explaining that those were temperature-related.
Yeah. And, and as you work your way further away from the commercial area, there's currently less likely overflow parking occurring, but if we were to implement some sort of time limits or permit parking, again, we would probably push people into those areas, so where you might not be currently experiencing overflow parking, you could, if we don't properly post or define the geographic boundaries of the time limits. So, so the blue area is, is what we would initially propose for a timed parking zone. In order to implement that, we'd probably be looking at anywhere from four to six signs posted every block, so that, that the time limits are clearly conveyed to, to the motorist, and, and that the enforcement officers can say, you know, it was properly posted and therefore enforceable. So, you know, that does represent a little bit of an aesthetic impact to the neighborhoods, you know, of suddenly having, you know, this array of signs, you know, up and down this historic district, but it's unfortunately, would become a necessity if we want to have something enforceable. Applicability, this is really important, it applies to every vehicle, you know, there are, you know, if we're talking about time limits, it applies to the public, it applies to the residents, it applies to service vehicles, it's the same thing we've been going through over by the high schools, most lately, at Vista High School, with the time limit parking to discourage the students. Those time limits also affect the residents, and so, because of that, we, as your staff, recommend that you, we do outreach to the residents and get some consensus from them that they're willing to accept this impact on their lifestyle in order to address, you know, to combat this issue of overflow parking. The enforcement would initially be done by a community service officer, so that's an existing staff person with Folsom PD, although there would be some equipment costs that we would have to, we'd have to purchase an enforcement vehicle, and some hardware and software for them to process citations. So, so there is a little bit of a cost in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars of, of initial cost, and then some ongoing maintenance cost.
Have we looked at, or has staff looked at, like, integrating an app or some sort of awareness of open parking spaces in the garage, like, having signage for that with this, or?
Yeah, when I get to the wayfinding, I think that, that should address your question.
Thanks.
So the permit parking is, we currently don't have the ability to do permit or preferential parking in the city of Folsom. We can, it just requires us to amend the Folsom Municipal Code to create a permit parking program. If we were to go that way, staff would recommend that the boundaries would be very similar to what I depicted here for the time limits. If you make it too small of a permit zone, it's very difficult to manage, very costly to manage, because it's high cost with, with low dispersion, you know, low number of permits issued. So again, if you make it a larger zone and you issue more permits, it diffuses the cost somewhat. Again, this is very impactful to the residents, and most permit parking programs require a majority, most require two-thirds of majority of the affected property owners to approve of a permit parking program. And then you get into the questions of, well, how many permits would you issue per, per address? There's a lot of folks in the district who have multiple vehicles, would we issue one for every vehicle, or a certain number per household? How many guest permits would we issue, and would that be done on a total number per year? Or would we charge for guest permits? These are all questions that we would have to flesh out if we were to go down this, this path. The signage program would be very similar to the time limits, we just have to make sure it's posted frequently enough that, that the public understands what the regulations are and that they are enforceable. There will be substantial staff time, not only to develop this program, because it's new, but also to administer it. And typically, programs of this type, because it's a preferential parking program, the cost is borne by the, the beneficiaries, it's, it's like a special assessment district, where, you know, we, again, we try what we can, what we, best we can to minimize the cost, but that cost would be borne by the permit holders.
Is it by law, or is this precedent?
This is, this is just precedent, yeah, that we, we have flexibility there.
Okay.
So to your, your earlier question, Councilman Gaylord, wayfinding is, is an area that we are, we are actively working on right now. What we would do is, we would not only post better parking signage on the parking structure, but we would add sensors to detect the number of vehicles entering, exiting, so that we'd know how many spaces were available, and we could convey that, that information to the public, not only through signs mounted on the parking structure, but we would also propose to have some signage on the entry, the main entryways into the district, so on the Lake Natoma Crossing, as you're coming up to the drop structure. The Sutter Street off-ramp from Folsom Boulevard, in both directions of Riley Street, we could have a sign like the one on the bottom here, where it's not only directing the public towards the parking structure, but letting them know whether it's open, or how many spaces are available. There's about a twenty-five thousand dollar initial cost to implement what I just described, which is detection and signage on the parking structure, and then these remote entryway wayfinding signs. There's also a modest annual cost for the, for the wireless data. But once we have that data and we're sending it out, yes, we can extend, extend that data out to the public, either through the city's website, or through some sort of a historic district parking app. And if we were going to do that, I would suggest we go ahead and do it for all of our major parking lots in the district, so that, you know, someone can open up an app and just see green or red for whatever parking lot they're aiming for.
With that, in that consideration, I'd like to see us focus on that, the bike share program, or the electric scooters as well, in those areas, so that it's more convenient. I see like, a lot of times, you know, folks will park on the streets, and they won't go to the garage, because it's closer to the destination, so if we provide some of those options like that down there, and test it out with that, I think it would be pretty beneficial.
I think so, and I also think that there, I can't confirm it, but I think there's a certain misconception about the parking structure, I think the casual visitor to the district doesn't realize it's free parking, they don't realize that it's public parking, they think it's a light rail park-and-ride lot. And the park-and-ride lots themselves, which are convenient, available parking on weekends, you know, we, we need to better advertise to folks that, yes, it's okay to park there. Maybe there's a safety concern, you know, it is at a kind of remote end of the district, if there are concerns about lighting or, or security, you know, that's something that perhaps we can address as well. And then, I won't go through all of this, but this is just a summary of the parking management strategies that Kim Lee Horn initially identified in the two thousand and eight study. Some of these, as I mentioned earlier, have been implemented, the, the loading zones on Sutter Street, the time limits on the on-street parking to try to make that parking available for the visitors, and not so much for the employees and the merchants themselves. Some of the longer-term strategies that we should still consider are updating our parking requirements for new development, and/or establishing in-lu parking fees, so that we can start building up some funding for, for this second parking structure. We, we've touched on things like the permit parking, there are other aspects to this, such as, you know, valet parking for restaurants, you know, perhaps that's a way of getting more cars into the parking structure, if the restaurants will valet those cars over there. We already addressed the time limits, and...
In regards to the additional parking structure, have we looked at the, at the possibility, I think the city owns the Glen, the RT station, or the parking lot over there off Glen, and you, or Folsom Boulevard, right?
Yes.
So have we looked at possibly doing some sort of mixed-use parking garage there, and, you know, like, something with that spot, to offload some of that RT parking from the garage over to there?
It, it has been identified as a TOD, a transit-oriented development site, which would be potentially structured parking with some sort of, you know, mixed use, whether it be apartment, residential, and/or some retail. It hasn't been actively studied to this point, it's just identified as a TOD location.
I'd like to start looking into that, too.
And just a point of historical perspective, when we did the previous investigations for the next best location for the parking structure, the lowest-cost alternative was Trader Lane, and you get the big, it's the least cost per parking space, and you get, excuse me, and you get the most amount of parking spaces out of it. Mark, I just wanted to remind everybody that the restripe off-street lots and charge-per-hour parking fee would require significant changes, and I don't know if we would yet be out of the woods, remember, we, we made it, we prohibited charging for parking unless it was a donation, and we did that to protect ourselves from the state of California taking the parking structure. So we need to keep in mind, I don't know if that would be off the table at this point, or if the state could come in and take that, physically take the structure, that's why we did it in the first place.
And I would just add on to that, that if we were to implement some sort of metered parking in the district, if you think back to the way the utilization of the structure on weekends, very underutilized, I would say we would start by doing meters on the other end of the district where it's impacted, and compel some of those motorists to go find what would still be free parking in the parking structure, to even out the utilization.
I'm just suggesting that we have to look at that very carefully, because if we eliminate that prohibition of charging for parking, does that put us in a, in a position where the state of California comes back and takes the twelve million dollar parking structure, because they see it as a cost center, where they could make money by charging significantly more for parking than, than I would imagine we would ever do? I just want to throw that out there as a caution.
Right. And certainly, a concern has been raised in the past about putting the historic district at a competitive disadvantage to other retail centers in Folsom and in the region who don't charge for parking. I think that's all I wanted to touch on, on this particular graphic. And so with that, that actually concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any more questions you have or turn it over for the rest of the workshop.
Last thing I wanted, or not last thing, but I also wanted to add on there, one of the big issues, I held a meeting with the historic district and the dropping of truck deliveries down there, that's a huge issue, too. So if we can figure out that component within this as well, that would be good.
Yeah, we tried to address that back in 2014 and actually created two designated on-street loading zones on Sutter Street to try to properly locate those vehicles somewhere where they could do the on-street loading without severely impacting the ability for people to flow down the street.
Murray had, Murray with Powerhouse had some ideas and we were going to circle back on that. So that might be something we reach out to and find out because I think he had some ideas on utilizing his spot up top and below for that. I'm not sure where he was going with it, but he wanted to discuss it, so just a point of note.
Any questions for Mark before we start taking some speakers? Thank you, Mark, stand by.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to announce the speakers and when you hear your name, if you're next in queue, please move towards the front so that way we can be efficient because I think we got about at least 10 or 12. And at three minutes apiece, you can see we're going to be here for over an hour just listening to speakers and then obviously you want to have some time to hear what we have to say and vice versa. So with that, City Clerk?
Your first speaker will be Tony Powers. Tony will be followed by Sheri Metzger and Sheri will be followed by Mike Brinkwitz.
Good evening, clearly I did that wrong, turned the card in last, ended up on the top of the pile.
There you go thinking again.
Pardon?
I said, there you go thinking again. Good to see you, Tony.
Hurts every time. Tony Powers, 1002 Natoma Street. Glad we're here to talk about this. Thing that jumped out at me was the graphic on the parking supply and the future parking. And what that showed was twice the amount of vehicles in the district in 10 years than are here right now. And then twice the vehicles in district means twice the traffic in the district approaching it. So my biggest concern is how is that traffic filtering through the residential streets? What are we doing to calm that traffic? What are we doing to make it safe for pedestrians to circulate through the district? For years, the council has said sidewalks are controversial. My answer to that is the traffic is incompatible with pedestrians walking in the street. The volume of traffic, the speed of the traffic is incompatible with pedestrians walking in the street. So there are several solutions. You slow down the traffic, you eliminate some of the traffic, or you put in sidewalks. We need to have that discussion and look into those options. It's not the one doesn't work, so we're not going to think about it. Finally, regarding time-limited parking, I don't see how you can do time-limited parking in the residential portions of the district when people don't have any off-street parking. So there is one way you can do that. You can do that if you have a combination of time-limited and permit parking. So you have permit parking for residents that is unlimited time, and then you have time-limited parking for people who don't have a permit. And that sort of combination addresses both the issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Sheri Metzger, who will be followed by Mike Brinkwitz, who will then be followed by Karen Holmes.
Hi, my name is Sheri Metzger. I am a co-owner of Dorothea's Shop, which is located on 801, at 801 Sutter. I have been working down there in the historic district now for about five years. And I have been very surprised at the number of customers that have come into my store who had absolutely no idea that we had a parking garage, none. They see a big, beautiful building down at the end of the block and before Scott started going up, you could see it from my front door. And I would point it out to them because that's where the public restroom was at the time as well. And I'd say, you see the building down there with the clock? Yeah. I said, that's a parking garage. Really? So I think what happens is folks come in from out of town, or maybe they haven't even been down to the historic district for a long time, and they just simply do not know that you have built this beautiful building that's actually a parking garage. So I know that there's been some signage put up already, but to me, what you need is a great big blue P and the word free under it with an arrow pointing down Sutter Street to direct them to that parking garage. Because I also believe that part of the reason why they're going out into the neighborhoods is because they cruise around down on Trader Lane and they don't find any parking, and so they head up into the residential area. Having said all that, I believe that the most effective way to help the neighbors is to do a permit parking system where they get a sticker or something that identifies that they belong in the neighborhood and that those folks who, you know, are employees or customers or others who don't live there, might end up with a ticket if they did park there. I think that is the most effective solution along with a better wayfinding program like Mark talked about. However, I do have two concerns, having said that. All regulatory programs are only as good as their enforcement. I mean, you can give out 100 stickers for people to put on their cars, but if there's nobody available or going around making sure that who's there is supposed to be there, your system has absolutely no value. The other is if you take away public street parking, even in the residential areas, during the special events that you have down on Sutter Street, that we have things like the craft fair and Folsom Live and all these things, they may very well end up impacting the ability to even have those special events. And in turn, that impacts the economic viability of the businesses that are located down in the historic district. So I firmly believe that this is an issue that needs to be very carefully vetted and isn't something that you should just rush into a judgment, much like your transit discussion that you had. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Brinkwitz, who will be followed by Karen Holmes, who will then be followed by Glenn Fait.
Good evening. To say thank you very much for meeting with us, Council, or hearing our concerns, have to bear with me, I'm a bit of a nervous public speaker. I actually wrote down things, I came up with different numbers because I simply walked all the lots, but please bear with me. Folsom is growing in leaps and bounds and Historic District is no exception. The 2010 downtown renovation provided new buildings and business opportunities in the Historic District. Sadly, because many of these large developments were not required to provide their own parking, a severe parking shortage has been created. The city council needs to take an accurate and realistic look at the actual parking needs at Sutter Street and its surrounding areas. I'd like to present some numbers to the council as I see them. If you look at the city's parking structure, lots and street parking, I am counting approximately 650 parking spaces in Old Town. Some of these spaces are shared with light rail and park and ride. The business guide next to light rail shows that Old Folsom currently has 24 restaurants, four regular bars, five wine and beer bars, 27 retail shops, 22 beauty shops, 10 art studios, two museums, two entertainment businesses, and 34 business services establishments. This is over 130 businesses in Old Folsom alone. Most of these provide no parking and are vying for space in the public parking lots. Dividing the current businesses into the public parking provided, this provides a total of five spaces for each business, their owners, employees, and customers. This includes the high parking use businesses like restaurants and bars. Not included in these numbers is the soon-to-open Scott Seafood, the existing retail spaces currently vacant and for lease, or the eight residential lofts known as the Whiskey Row Lofts. Scott Seafood alone will have a seating capacity of over 300. Their parking needs will likely be 80 to 100 spaces during peak hours. Scott's provides no parking themselves and is fully reliant on the existing public parking. There are also two new buildings that will soon be built on Sutter Street, the Granite House and the Sutter Row Building. Combining these two buildings together will provide another 17,893 square foot of retail, 6,669 square feet of office, and 47 one- and two-bedroom residential lofts. There's only 58 parking spaces planned. This will not even cover the residential lofts. The retail and office will need to use the city lots. Folsom can no longer assume that the existing parking structure and lots are sufficient for the current and future parking needs of the owners, employees, and customers of downtown businesses. A comparison would be the Folsom Palladiums. Here's a complex with currently 90 businesses. It provides two large multi-level parking lots, structures, three huge parking lots and street parking. Over 3,000 parking spaces are provided for their business needs. Their parking lots are placed throughout the complex to provide easy parking to their 90 businesses. Folsom should use this parking model as an example for Old Town. I feel a realistic look at the business parking needs would show that Old Folsom will need parking in the 2,000-plus space range while over the 650 provided, not including special events. Take a drive through the historic residential neighborhoods on any Thursday, Friday, or Saturday evenings, and you'll see streets filled with cars that cannot find parking on Sutter Street. It's only a matter of time before ladies going to Old Folsom to have lunch or the family taking their kids to ice cream and candy at Snicks will have to park up next to Natoma Street and walk because there's simply no parking downtown. Realistically, people don't want to walk five blocks away from where they shop, especially considering the Folsom weather. They'll simply go elsewhere. This will hurt the downtown businesses. I respectfully urge the council to take an actual and realistic look at the current and future Old Town parking needs and build more parking structures downtown. It's a win-win for everybody. Residential street parking will not solve the parking problem. The 2010 development showed a second parking structure needed on Trader's Lane that was never built. There's also room for additional parking behind the Folsom Hotel, Sutter Steakhouse, and a lot on the other side of the Eagles Lodge. Making historic district residents' lots into the city's parking lot is very unfair to the people living there. We're constantly dealing with trash, noise, human waste, and other unpleasant issues. This problem will only get worse with new development. Permitted parking will require 24 enforcement to be effective. An occasional officer drive-by will not be able to enforce the permitted parking. I sincerely thank you for your time and hearing us out.
No problem, you did good.
Next speaker is Karen Holmes, followed by Glenn Fait, who will be followed by Barbara Larry.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. You guys have all received a letter from me that I wrote last week on behalf of the board. And I think I want to thank you and Mark, and I know Mark didn't do the report himself, but that report covers so much information that I don't think we had as a board. And I think that we would very much like to be thought of as part of the process in being able to fix some of the problems that are down in the district. We're there every day. We see the things that are happening down there. There wasn't a page on that report that I didn't have some sort of rebuttal on, and not all of it was negative. It wasn't at all. It was just information. And there is a lot of things that we would like to be able to help with. One of the things that I think is really important when you talk about the parking garage is that, I haven't heard anybody say it yet, although the gentleman just did a moment ago, people just don't want to walk. And I think we have to make some kind of campaign happen where we just really show them, look, the historic district is only three blocks long. And you really can't make it from there to there. It's totally possible. The parking garage is underutilized in an enormous way, and it should be very easy for people to do that. To be honest, their doctors will all thank them for walking the three blocks, so go do that. But one of the big things about parking in the district, because you've all mentioned that there's timed parking, there's timed signs, but there are caps that are down there on occasion, but there is not really any enforcement. And so there is people walking around trying to do the right thing, and it's just such a nice town, it's such a nice city, when someone comes hustling down and say, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming, and off they go. And so we're going to have to have some enforcement down there so we can really get people to park, encourage them to come down to the parking garage, because that's going to be a solution in a big way, helpful for the immediate future. Yeah.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
Next is Glenn Fait, who will be followed by Barbara Larry, who will be followed by Ben Fuentes.
Hi. Can you hear? Do I have to bend over?
No, we can hear you.
Okay. I want to start by saying something that is related to historic parking in the residential area, and that is to say to Mayor Steve Miklos and Councilman Andy Marin, thank you so much for the years and hours and mind-numbing meetings you have given to this city. And only somebody that's been there can understand what it takes to do that. So we appreciate that.
Well, thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you.
In terms of the, as you say, we have two issues here. They're interconnected but probably need to be approached separately. The first one is we need more commercial parking. Now, I own commercial property, also have probably the most impacted residents in the district. So I see both sides of it very vividly almost every Saturday morning when I get up for my walk. Sutter Street is changing. The study that was given here, one of the problems with it, by the way, and I have the study, the 2008 study, I haven't seen the 14 update, but they count as available parking currently, on-street parking that is in the residence area. All along Figaroa, from Sutter to Scott, all of the streets going up to Figaroa, they're all residents. From Scott to Bridge on Sutter Street is all residential, and they're counting that as part of our parking inventory. I don't think that's right. That's a problem with the study itself. And if you took those away, we'd be at 100% in some of those areas in terms of parking. So you need another parking garage. And when that study was done, by the way, they showed that there was no restaurant in Zone 1. Okay, now I think there's four, five. And they also admitted that you needed more parking for restaurants and more parking for bars and so on, the need for retail. We're not a retail, we've changed a great deal, the city's getting bigger, the district's changing a great deal, and we need to be ready for it. So we need to plan now for this increasing need for parking. What I would recommend the council do is appoint a committee staffed by the city and made up of stakeholders, including property owners, business owners, chamber of commerce, residents, to develop a proposal for the next needed parking garage, including funding alternatives. Now, everybody's looking at this and saying, oh, we've lost redevelopment, so we don't have funding. But there are other possible places to do funding, and I hate to say it because I've resisted it for years, but I think it's time we talk about paid parking. People have to pay for parking. They pay for parking in Auburn, Old Town, they pay for it just about everywhere else. And I think people expect to pay. That's the way we can finance it. That's how they financed Golden One Arena in Sacramento was through parking money. And there's no reason we can't use that as a basis. We need to create a parking district so that in lieu of developer fees for parking can be paid into that to build another parking garage. Instead of giving them a variance that says you don't have to supply parking, have them pay the money. And that way, they don't have to make ridiculous-looking buildings there that don't fit the architecture because they're trying to build in parking. Let them pay into a fund that will go in to build a new parking structure. Also, developer in fact fees, historic district assessments, we have a district down there. I would assume the property owners would be open to the idea of helping to pay for a new parking garage through assessment. Enforcement revenue, and of course, federal and state grants. So there's a lot of ways. And we need to get this committee of stakeholders together to develop the funding alternatives and develop a budget and a way to build it. Now, the other side of this is the residents, of course, that won't, a new parking garage won't purely solve the problem of people parking in front of my house because it's easier to walk a half a block down the hill to get to a business that is three blocks up a hill. And no matter how many parking garages, they're always going to be more convenient to park in some residential areas. So the way to approach that has to be, as has been mentioned before, that we have both resident permit and timed parking in the residential area, residential permits. By the way, we don't have to, I'd like to see a separate committee made mainly of residents, but some business owners, to develop that system. And I, you know, I don't particularly mind parking there during the day, but it's at night that real problems come up. And if you put parking limits not past a certain hour when people need to return home and park in front of their house and the more raucous entertainment starts, you could do that and still allow the parking during the day. Sacramento, by the way, we don't have to reinvent the wheel to do this because Sacramento has over 25,000 parking spaces subject to residential permitting. And the reason they do that is because the old- And the reason they do that is because the older areas of Sacramento have more limited onsite parking and more limited on-the-street parking, and they're being affected by commuters that are trying to park in the residential area and by customers and businesses who want to park in the residential area. Well, that's all of what we have down there. By the way, the district doesn't have to start the size that Mark put up there. It can be smaller, and it can be grown depending upon how we study the impacts of whether that parking then spreads into further residential areas. And last but not least, and that's enforcement, as many people mentioned, we need to enforce it. I think that, you know, we need to be creative with that, too. It doesn't have to be a police officer, it doesn't even have to be a code enforcement officer, it can be one of the police volunteers. I held the hearings, my institute did, for Sacramento parking violations for twenty-two years, and for a long period of time there, they subcontracted with the disability rights organization to ticket disabled parking space violations. It was made for some real interesting dynamics. But there are a lot of creative ways we can do the enforcement without having to hire another policeman. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Glenn, and thank you for coming down.
Next speaker is Barbara Larry. Barbara will be followed by Ben Fuentes, who will be followed by Connie Chan.
Good evening, Barbara Larry. I don't live in the historic district, but I have a good number of friends down there who are here tonight. And this has been a problem as long as I've lived in Folsom. The first five to ten minutes of every visit to a friend's house in the historic district is taken up with complaints about the parking there, not on my part. It's something that I'm glad the council has finally taken up, and I really appreciate all the comments that have been made so far. I really like the idea of having the additional parking garage, but this is a problem that needs a multi-pronged approach, and I think a lot of those approaches have been discussed tonight, is increasing the visibility of the current parking garage, adding a parking garage in the long run. I spend a good deal of time in Sacramento at my daughter's house. They have permit parking throughout Land Park, the downtown area, and other parts of Sacramento, and the residents do not have to pay for their parking permits. Each house gets two parking permits, and they also get, if they want to apply for them, two additional parking permits for visitors. So if they have somebody over for company, or if they have somebody working on their house, there's also a permit available for those people. The other problem with the parking generally occurs around the larger events, and light-rail parking lots have been used to bring people into the historic district. When I go down there for an event, I walk down from my home in Natoma Station to Light Rail and take it downtown. I'm just wondering if there's maybe a way to have some kind of reduced fares for people that would be using light rail just for those kinds of short trips, so we can increase utilization during heavier use times of the light-rail parking lots for people to get down to the historic district. So those, I just wanted to throw out some more ideas. It's time to incorporate a lot of what's already been brought up this evening, and I think having multiple meetings, as Glenn suggested, with both the residents and the business owners to come up with solutions sooner rather than later would be a great thing for the city to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Ben Fuentes. Ben will be followed by Connie Chan, who will be followed by Cindy Ferris.
How many years have I come up here and addressed this council about parking in the historic district and traffic? Same faces, Mick Los, Kerry Howell, Andy Marin. How many years? Ten, fifteen, twenty years you guys have been up here? We're still talking about this. Your staff did a darn good job tonight of presenting stuff, and I compliment Mark. He surprised me. The 2008 recommendations, you guys follow those and you'd be on the ball. That's the deal. Glenn's right, we need to build something now at the north end of Sutter Street. We've got a situation where, where I live, at the corner of Scott and Sutter, where at nine or ten in the morning, the steakhouse staff come in, stay there till two or three in the afternoon in front of my house, all three cars. They leave, the four o'clock crew comes in, they change their clothes, comb their hair, brush their teeth, all that kind of stuff, and then they stay till about nine or ten, till their jobs are done. And so you've got a lot of on-street parking by people who work in the district. I think they ought to be forced to park in the structure and free up the streets that are available for residents and visitors. One of the problems you'd have if you've got limited time parking, and I've been thinking about this, is that if I have a party, a Christmas party, and people are only allowed to park one or two hours in front of my house, that could be a problem. But maybe that would be easily solved by maybe being able to put a sticker on their dash during something like that, and the residents could have some kind of issuance of those things. I just wish you guys would act on this. I don't have a lot of faith. What is it? Let's see. Here's my lottery ticket. I probably got a better chance that I won tonight than you guys are going to do anything because it hasn't happened in twenty years, so maybe tonight we'll get something going, huh? I hope I didn't offend anybody. I appreciate it.
No, you did, but I won't go there. You obviously haven't been paying attention to some of the stuff we have done, so there's my shot back at you. So, go ahead.
Next speaker is Connie Chan, who will be followed by Cindy Ferris, who will then be followed by Jeff Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members. I feel now I didn't really read what this meeting was about because I'm not a resident, but I'm a business owner, and an area that seemed to me kind of discounted during the presentation. And I do feel the frustrations that the homeowners feel. I rent a suite at the lakes on the first floor near the trailhead. My business is impacted by the public parking where they shouldn't be. There is a sign at the entrance to our parking lot clearly stating, "Private property, no trail or light-rail parking, violators will be towed." In addition, there is a curb painted red with no parking, fire lane. When I arrived at work this afternoon, there was a car parked up against the red curb for several hours. We continually have people parking in this area to unload paddleboards and kayaks. The last few Saturdays, we have had cross-country teams parking in our lot, or the parents parking for up to thirty minutes waiting for the children to finish. Daily, we have bicyclists parking in our lot and hopping on the trail. On Sunday, I came into work, not this past, in the past, I came into work and there were no spots for myself or my client. I had to cancel the appointment. Since that incident, I keep track of all of the events happening on Sutter and don't make appointments for those days. We have become parking monitors by putting out cones in the parking lot, watching for our clients, and speaking to others to find out their destination. On a recent Saturday afternoon, someone pulled into the middle of two parking spots. I watched for a few minutes to see if they were just turning around. After about five minutes, I approached the car and asked them what business they were going to be visiting. They responded, "Oh, I'm just watching my guest arrive for my wedding. We will leave in a few minutes." They stayed another ten minutes, taking up those two spots. We are not, the only business where public parking is private, has private property. The public just does not honor private property, whether it's a business or a residence. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cindy Ferris. Cindy will be followed by Jeff Nelson, who will be followed by Adina Blair.
Good evening. Hi, Cindy.
Hi, Mayor, City Council members. I too am not a, I'm a familiar face to all of you, and on October 24th, 2013, five years ago, I was at the Landmark Baptist Church where we met with you and talked about the parking situation, and at that time, since that time, nothing has been resolved. And now I'm concerned about the buildings being built on Sutter Street, specifically the Roundhouse Building, which will occupy Scott Seafood and the Willamette Wine Bar. And I'm assuming that their employees and patrons will park in the parking structure at Reading and Leeds Dorf. However, that parking structure only holds three hundred and thirty cars, and numerous spaces are taken up by weekday light-rail riders, which will affect the lunchtime patrons and early happy hour or dinner patrons going to those restaurants. During street fairs and certain events, there is a fee charged by the chamber to park in the garage. Will Scott Seafood be validating parking on those days? And the parking garage is not the solution for those people visiting the businesses on the seven and eight hundred block of Sutter Street. It's just too far away. People would go to the gym and look for the closest parking spot to go run on the treadmill, but they won't walk two blocks to go on Sutter Street. It's just human nature. And in spite of the known parking issues, parking variances continue to be granted, and the city's parking ratio requirement of one space per three hundred and fifty square feet is consistently being overlooked. The draft historic district plan, which was discussed tonight, dated December 9, 2008, recommended an increase of the parking ratio to one space per three hundred and five square feet, as well as a long-term strategy of implementing a residential permit parking program in specific neighboring areas, specifically Wool and Figaroa, which is where I live. Orange cones are the only way to ensure that I have a place to park in front of my house. I have had people take the cones, move the cones, and argue with me that it's not legal. The mayor himself recommended that we do that years ago, put the cones out. When my husband and I moved to the historic district in October 1980, thirty-eight years ago, we didn't have a parking issue with Sutter Street. The only events that affected parking were the Peddlers Fair and Craft Fair, which were each biannual events. We accepted parking difficulties on those event days and planned ahead for them. Now parking is a daily issue. During the weekdays, we have Sutter Street employees parking on Figaroa and Wool Streets for eight hours a day. Some employees park on Wool Street along the Trinity Episcopal Church parking area, taking away parking for church visitors, forcing more on-street parking shortages. A possible solution might be to have specific lots or areas designated as employee-only parking. The Trinity Episcopal Church has daily AA recovery meetings, creating traffic and parking difficulties for surrounding residents. The Sutter Street Theater Annex Building on Figaroa also adds to the traffic and parking frustration for residents. During the last two months, September and October, historic district residents have been impacted by the Antique and Vintage Market, the Folsom Live, the Glow Run, where Riley Street was temporarily closed, and downhill traffic was diverted onto Figaroa Street, creating quite a nightmare. Light Up the Dark Music Festival, the Soapbox Derby, the Folsom Blues Breakout Half Marathon, which caused traffic on Wool and Figaroa Streets due to closed roads at 6:30 a.m. on a Sunday morning. And this weekend, we have the Fest of Fall. Events are getting more and more frequent on Sutter Street, therefore, parking is becoming more of an issue. I think that the number of events on Sutter Street should be limited each year. Also, the historic district should reap the benefits of events on Sutter in some way, perhaps by putting a percentage of the profits into a historic district fund to help pay for historic street lamps, sidewalks, and signage. My recommendation is two- to three-hour parking restrictions on the residential streets bordering Sutter Street, with exceptions for residents via car stickers or permits. This would eliminate the all-day parking and discourage others from parking in the residential areas. Also, additional signage posted along the existing residential neighborhood signs, stating, "Sutter Street patrons, please do not park in the residential areas. Parking garage on Reading Street in Leeds Dorf and/or parking for Sutter Street is discouraged in the residential areas." Folsom's volunteer police would be a great resource for monitoring the parking on the residential streets. And lastly, nightly events are dangerous with people walking in the streets without sidewalks or adequate streetlights. Another solution might be to make the arterial streets, Wool to Cater in Reading, for example, one-way. Wool Street between Sutter and Figaroa is too narrow for car movement in both directions. It would make room for bike lanes and sidewalks and provide a safer environment for everyone traveling to and from Sutter Street.
Okay. Great, thank you, Cindy.
Cindy, can I just, just a point of clarification? You had mentioned that the chamber has been charging for parking. I have never seen that, and this kind of goes back to my comments earlier, that we have a prohibition of charging for parking. When that happens, it's typically in the parking structure, and it's a donation, and if I am correct, it's usually to benefit the Historical Society. Sometimes it's their, it's members of the Historical Society, and sometimes I think it's Rotarians that actually collect that money, but I'm pretty sure that's where most of it goes.
Okay. It's on specific street fair days when they charge to park in the lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you, Cindy. We're going to address a lot of stuff today.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Jeff Nelson, who will be followed by Adina Blair, who will be followed by Doug Schalze.
Thank you for taking up this important issue, Jeff Nelson of nine twelve Natoma. As we talk about this issue, it brings up three things for me. One, which was Mark addressed, the historic district goes up to Natoma, so I'm glad to see that's in there. Two, traffic, obviously, as we become more and more popular down there, traffic is an issue, so how are we going to address that? How are we going to slow it down? You know, there's some very practical issues that we could do addressing on Natoma and other streets of roundabouts, traffic circles, to create that visual barrier to prevent people from just, because there's a lot of straight streets down there in historic districts, so it creates a natural thought of, oh, I can go fast here, but obviously not supposed to. And the last one, which has been addressed multiple times, is just a pedestrian issue. Even if we did permits, there's still the issue of walking down the hill. Two young kids who were here earlier, and we chose to live down there because we love the, activities are down, but getting down there, especially at nights, it becomes dangerous, especially with, you know, young kids. So sidewalks is a necessity down there, and it's something that needs to be addressed, especially as this gets busier and busier. A permit doesn't solve that issue, so those are the big issues I wanted to address. Thanks for taking us up.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next is Adina Blair, who will be followed by Doug Schalze, who will be followed by JoBecca Trotta.
Hi there. Hey, Mark, can we go back and look at, in the picture of the areas one, two, and three? Because I just, I wanted to look at that one again. Oh, you can't see, oh, there, okay. So...
You guys stay at the microphone so we can hear you. There's a pointer up there.
Oh, I got a big mouth. It's okay.
No, ma'am, you really have to be at the microphone because it has to be recorded up there, so you need to go back to the microphone. We can hand you a pointer if you don't have one there.
All right, well, so I live at Figaroa between Riley and Scott.
There's not a pointer for her at the point. Hang on a second.
What I want to understand is the area one, is that including both sides of the street there? Because it looks like it's just one side of the street, one side of Figaroa. And then it's not including Figaroa between Scott and Bridge, which is just loaded with cars. In fact, that picture at the very beginning of your slide presentation, it's a picture of Figaroa between Scott looking toward Bridge, so...
The answer to your question is...
Right here. You see?
Yeah, it only covers the north side of the streets that was just chosen to be the boundary of the commercial area for the parking studies.
Okay, well, I've lived there for six years, right here, and you've just got a massive amount of cars that are on this side, parking in the church here, and all the way up toward Bridge Street on Figaroa. So those numbers of cars are not even being figured into any of your newer 2018, and it wasn't like that so bad in 2014, but it is now. So I just wanted to bring that up. And then also, kind of nitpicking, but at Natoma Street and Scott, there is a sign that says, "Parking this-a-way." And I would really love to see that sign go away because, I mean, I've been tempted over the years to go over there. to go over there, get a wrench, and just take it down, because it just annoys me. Because it's directing people to go park in our neighborhood. And I'd rather have that sign say, "Resident Parking Only." But it looks like it's directing people to come park in our neighborhood. I don't know if you know the sign, but if you go to Natoma and Scott, you'll see it. And then, just some suggestions I have. Other people have said, "We need a parking enforcement." I would love to see our PD have a parking enforcement division. I don't think we have anything like that yet, because we have people that are parking even illegally. Every weekend, you see somebody park there, and sometimes we'll remember when we get home to call PD and say, "Hey, they're parking there again." And then pretty soon, you'll see them come out, and they'll ticket. But it's like, nobody gets a ticket unless one of us is complaining about something. And we're only complaining when it's an illegal parking, like in front of Glenn's house. So we really super need the enforcement going on. I remember back when they were building the dam, they rerouted traffic, and it really helped with the traffic flows. And that may very well be something to take a look at. It might help reduce people coming through the neighborhoods and looking for parking, because it's not so easy to get through there. Maybe one ways is a way to go, I don't know. And I would also like to suggest that on Sutter Street, where you have just the few little parallel spots here and there, that maybe we could make those just 15 minutes only, or disabled parking, and reserve some areas for unloading and loading. But to have them be the two- or three-hour parkings that they are now, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, because then you have a lot of people that are thinking, "Oh, maybe I'll get lucky, I'll get one of those spots." And so I think it's creating a lot of extra traffic on Sutter Street, where if, over time, people understand that they're not going to be able to park there, maybe they'll head over to the garage, I'm hoping. And then, yeah, we need to promote the garage more. I love the big blue P idea, because I do know a lot of people that I've been with walking around down there, they didn't know that that is where we're supposed to be parking. They don't know.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker is Doug Schalzy, who will be followed by JoBecca Trotta, who will be followed by Dino Trotta.
Hello.
Good evening.
I think it's going to be the last time I'll probably see you two up here. So I want to congratulate you on all your time you've served, Councilman Warren. And Mayor Farquhar, I appreciate your time, too. That's a private joke.
Yes, it is.
Mayor Mclellan, I appreciate your time, too, and will be missed.
Very welcome, thank you.
And I also want to say that you guys have done plenty for the historic district, and there's a lot to be done still, of course. But there's been a lot of things that have happened down there. And it's only happened because of the amount of time that you guys put into it. There's parking garages, there's, you know, all the new things that have happened with the streetscape and everything. I am a resident of the historic district since 1995. I've been a resident of Folsom all my life. I am also involved in the commercial district down there. I've done some projects, one of them being the Sutter Street Steakhouse Building. And that was another one that we spent three years on, working with redevelopment to do a public-private partnership, and it was one of the first ones that was done down there. There was a lot of time put into it, and we created a parking garage. It will be public parking for 99 years, so we'll be all gone by then. But, you know, it was a project that you guys set forth. My point today is that I can reiterate a lot of things, and I know that there are some issues with parking in the residential area that people have problems with. I have a house, I've lived on Sutter Street since 95. I live on Leeds Dorf now, but I still have a residence on Sutter Street. I have never had a problem with people parking in front of my house. It's part of the nature of the historic district. The events down there, the things that go on in the commercial district are very vital to the residential area and everything that makes that whole area work, okay? I do think that there's a lot of ways of managing the parking. I do not want to see timed parking. I do not want to see permitted parking. Number one, enforcement is very difficult to make that happen. Number two is that I don't want to see a bunch of signs in historic district residential area. I just don't. I already see enough signs in the commercial district that are so confusing that you've got parking this way, no parking, three-hour parking, two-hour parking, you know, it's all over the place. I don't want to see that in the residential area. And I do agree with the residents that there's a problem down there. I think number one is that maybe we ought to look, I mean, putting a committee together like what Glenn said, but having a good voice from every aspect to make this happen down there. There's a lot of great ideas that people have. Just let's get some people together and get a consensus of what's going to work. Couple of things I just want to throw out there. Number one, I do think that the public right-of-way is in the streets, or the historic district streets are all 66 feet wide. The street lanes are very narrow in the historic district, standard let widths. And the rest, people end up taking that area, that buffer between their houses in the historic districts, and after a while, you kind of think it's your own, you landscape it, you do this, you do that. A lot of people don't have even a parking lot or a parking spot in front of their house. They have alleys, which most people in the city of Folsom do not have the access to an alley to be able to park behind their house. How often does it get utilized? A lot of people build second units and dwellings, which is important for the historic district. But what's utilized behind their house in the alley? Do they access it? Is their garage full of crap, like mine is, you know, most of the time? So where is the parking? Secondly, a good example, my sister bought a house at 413 Decatur. She had beautiful yard and everything, standard parking on the street. We moved her fence back, pushed it back for parking stalls, made two parking stalls in her front yard. Landscaping still looks beautiful. Nobody can park in front of that area now. So there's a lot of houses on Figaroa and on these side streets and stuff that do not have any access from the front of their house. So maybe we could look at, maybe some of the residents also creating those parking stalls or a parking spot within their yard, not on the city right-of-way. But once you do that, people can't park in front of that. That's your driveway or your parking spot. You can't park in front of it. It's illegal. It's illegal to do. So that's something on that side. Secondly, the employees, I think that there's a big part of dealing with this by putting employees in a certain area, like people are talking about. All these areas that are parking, garages, different things like that that are underutilized. Start enforcing some of the business owners to make their employees park there. Because you look at people coming into restaurants and stuff like that, their turnover is maybe one, two, maybe three hours sometimes, depending on which restaurant they go to. Employees are there for six to eight hours. So they'll tie up, and I see it happen all the time, even in the garage at the Steakhouse. They're parking in there, and they're there all night long. So that means that's a turnover for two to three patrons that can't even happen, because there's an employee parking there. So I think that's a big part of the problem. Weekends, you've got state parks. You've got people coming up that get charged at state parks to park down there at the Powerhouse. So they come into the garage, they come to the city parking lots and fill those in. Happens all the time, people getting their bikes out and stuff like that. Maybe we can do something with the state to let whole parking lot down there in front of Powerhouse. Huge amount of parking down there that just sits there all the time. It's chargeable parking, but maybe we can work something with the state to where that could be even employee parking and move, you know, and utilize that area down there, work with the state. Because otherwise, those people don't want to pay for them to park there. That's the only place you have to pay to park. So they come up to the historic district, and they use all our spots, and they go off riding their bikes all day. But that's part of Folsom. That's part of the heritage that we have down there. That's part of why it's so nice to live there. And you know what? If you've got to deal with a little bit of parking problem, got to deal with a little bit of traffic problem, it's one of the reasons why people are getting 500 bucks a foot for their houses down there, because people want to live there, okay? People want to be down there. And I've dealt with the parking since I've been there since 95. I have, I don't have a problem with it. I really don't. So it's just something that I think that each individual, if we get a committee together and look at some of these different aspects, I think there's can be a lot handled. Parking garage down the road, great. I think it's a great idea. But that's going to happen way down the road. We need to look at some solutions right now. And I'm totally up for being part of that.
Doug, could I ask you two questions?
Sure.
Number one, how many parking spots are in the Steakhouse garage?
I think we ended with about 52, 52 to 54.
What's your number of employees during the day?
My employees?
In the Steakhouse?
I don't know. They're tenants.
What do you think? If you, you, you own the Steakhouse, right?
I don't. I don't own any of that anymore, yeah. The Steakhouse has maybe three or four prep people during the day. They open at 4:30, so they only have a couple of people in there prepping. And then at night, it depends on the weekends or weekdays, I would say six to 12.
I don't actually mean just the Steakhouse. I'm talking about the building itself. How many employees is it?
Well, there's office tenants. The majority of it's office tenants, so that's Monday through Friday. And that's one of the things that people have to consider, is that a lot of these, like that building, the office tenants are down there. They're gone by 5 o'clock, which the parking impact seems to be typically, you know, later at night.
But that's a problem we have in some areas, because they don't consider the employees to take it up during the day. There's no parking probably. Second question, not to embarrass you or nothing, but don't you have a no-parking sign in front of your house on these doors?
Yeah, I can't stand it. Yeah, I didn't put it there.
And that would keep your cars away from your house.
Yeah, but you know what? I also, when I have people come over to my house, they can't park out in front of my house. It's ridiculous. So just because it's been there, I get it why they put it there a long time ago. The street's very narrow through there, and I even own part of the right-of-way of that street. And it's an easement for the city of Folsom, okay?
Those are the things you had to work out, you know?
Yeah, I understand that. And there are places where you should have no parking, but I don't like it. To tell you the truth, I do not like it. So you can tell me that I have parking. I didn't put it there. I didn't ask for it. So I'm telling you right now, when I have events or I have people come over, I mean, can you imagine if you have friends over at your house, and you have to tell them to move their car in two hours? So you've got to think about all that stuff when you start making these decisions. I think there's solutions, but I think that just, you know, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I just want to give my two cents. Yep.
Thank you.
Next speaker is JoBecca Trotta, who will be followed by Dino Trotta, who will be followed by Jennifer Lane.
Mayor, Councilmember, oh, wow, did you see that? Why, we just got wiped off the map in the historic district. Well, all be darned. He would've been there for over 47 years, and it doesn't even show. Wow, that's really something. I kind of feel like a redheaded stepsister right now. You know, we've been here time after time, after time, after time, decades. Think of it, decades. This has been an ongoing issue with almost every single person in the historic area. It's not only parking. Oh, we put up with loaded diapers, used condoms, old milk bottles, beer bottles, everything that we clear up after an occasion on Sutter Street. We're tired of it. I'm tired of it. Nobody even comes up and says, "Can I help you? Can the city come up and help you with all of this trash and junk and all of that, and people vomiting?" No, no, we all have to take the brunt of that. And that's fine. I'm glad Sutter Street, with all their doodads and everything else, are prospering. But I don't think we are in the historic area. We're completely negated with anyone wondering what the heck is going on with individuals that care about their city, that care about where they live. They have a pride in where they live. Why doesn't Folsom have a pride in us? We are some of the original members of this town. My grandmother has a gold brick next to the puffers in the historic museum. That's how long we've been here, how long we've done things in this community. Why can't people help us? Parking is an issue, always. Every time there's an occasion, and these things are growing and growing with the, with the Chamber of Commerce putting on this and putting on that. We used to complain about people that were going to the rodeo. And I can remember putting an ad in the newspaper when we first moved here, "Please come and tell us what's happening," because we're not getting any answers from the city council or anybody in the offices there. And people came to our house and swarmed, even the chief of police came, and we all sat down and talked about it. And he said, "Well, you know, we don't know what to do. We have no idea what to do." Well, I sure don't. I have to come to the people who are in power and say, "Can you help us? Can you please help us?" I can't go out there with two flags and flag everybody down when all these occasions are happening and say, "Please don't park here." We don't have a garage. There's a lot of people in the historic area that don't have a garage. And, you know, we have to park out in front of our houses, and we can't even get in there. If I have a relative, or I have a friend, or we have an occasion at my house, there's no place to park. We have to go down the street and around the corner. Well, they have to walk. So, I mean, it's just getting to a point where it's ridiculous. This has gone on too long. We've been in our place for 47 years, and it's never made a change. And as far as these, these things that are being brought up and these district plans and these updates and all of that, well, I was reading where the Coloma traffic had a, on a, oh, how do you say it? I don't know. One of those markers in the street to see how many cars went by. Well, when the, when the end of the report was that the people that went down Coloma were below the amount that was allowable in a residential district, but they didn't count weekends and holidays. Well, I didn't know that was wiped off the map. I didn't know that nobody passed our house on the weekends and the holidays. And that's why it's under what is allowable in our neighborhood for going down Coloma. And I'm tired of hearing people, "Well, I like to go down Coloma. It's such a nice area." And then you go down and over the bridge. Twice at the end of Scott Street, you people have put a barrier so that no one could go down. They certainly had access to Sutter Street. There was no way that that was impaired in any way. But somebody, somewhere, said, "Oh, we don't like that. We like to go down and over the bridge." So you pulled it up twice since I've lived here. Be nice if you put it in again. It doesn't impede traffic to Sutter Street. It doesn't have anything to do with the businesses. But for goodness sake, I know everybody going down Coloma isn't rushing to go to Sutter Street to buy something. I just don't believe it. So please, 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 let's do something about this. Please. I mean, I think we're owed respect. I'm demanding respect for all of us in the historic area. We go along and comply and comply and are told that if we're patient, it will change. We've been told that so many times. We've been so patient. It's like, please, we're tired. Patience is at an end. Please do something. Help us, won't you? Thank you.
Thanks, JoBecca.
Next speaker is Dino Trotta, and Dino will be followed by Jennifer Lane.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Glad that I get to speak. I have to say ditto on almost a lot of the things that were mentioned tonight. What I like to bring up was a couple of issues that could be maybe added to a solution. One of the things would be interesting if the Chamber of Commerce or the people of the Sutter Street Merchants would maybe put a card together. It says, every time a patron came in, they gave the card and said, "Here's where the parking lot is, and if you let us click it so many times, we'll give you something." Just an idea, throw it around, but it's something that could help cheaply identify to the customers there is a parking lot, and they get a reward.
Dino, I was at an event, I don't know, maybe, might have been a month or so ago. It was a benefit for the Historical Society. But we were in three or four of the businesses, and I did notice that every one of the businesses that we went in, and I don't know who published this, I'm guessing it was the Merchants Association, but there was like a laminated card or heavy card stock to let people know where the parking structure was.
Well, I think that if there was some energy put into just the businesses down there to help the patrons understand that there is a place to go to, to park, and maybe they'll park there next time.
Yeah, the two places that I know I saw it was, one was at Snooks and one was at one of the wine bars.
Another situation that was brought up is about the parking of the, front of the businesses when deliveries are made. Now, it would be nice if all those deliveries were before 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock. But you can go down there at 2 o'clock and 3 o'clock, when people are going to lunch or maybe early dinner, and you have to weave through all those trucks. That, to me, is dangerous. Then the other thing is, I've brought this up before. I don't really want to integrate it as a problem, but there is no handicap parking on Sutter Street. Whatever there is, is in somebody's private lot. And... And it doesn't seem fair. You have to go all the way down to the parking lot to be handicapped and then struggle to go uphill. So maybe some kind of bussing that could be put together at peak hours. Just something to throw there on the ability of utilizing the parking lot. A lot of issues are brought up about the evenings and things that happen. I will speak from our location up on Coloma and Figueroa. What we have noticed is people park really far away now, up in our area. And at night, they're like in groups. They come up and I've noticed they're kind of rowdy. I wonder if they're just trying to get sober from being at the clubs or something. And by the time they get there, they could drive home or nobody noticed where they really are parked, but we have noticed that. And sometimes the groups that travel up of these streets, you could put sidewalks, but they all like walking in the middle of the street. And sometimes they're very scary. From their tone of voice, their comments, if you say hello or something, they reply with something that's negative. And you kind of go, okay, whatever. So sidewalks are good. I have a sidewalk. I put a sidewalk in. Glenn put a sidewalk in. There's other people that have done some sidewalks. There is not enough lighting. Brought this up many times is that we don't identify when you come into a historical area. It would be nice that the lighting or the signs or something would change and you say, oh, I'm in something different. If you implement some kind of program that is permit parking, a way to solve this, and Glenn brought it to my attention, that you could probably just get online and have something printed out. You put it inside the window of your guests. Just good for one hour. You could have that all registered, ready to go. Something that would be simple. You wouldn't have to involve everybody. You could just go online, say, I'm going to have two guests tonight. Print it out, bam, there you have it on your guests. Just another idea. Anyway, I have a lot of things that I've said over the years. They all still stand. I think the biggest problem is, is how do we communicate between our departments, through the council, through the merchants, through the residents, for the community at large? We need to work as a collective group so that we can come up with a good solution. There's a lot of times that we, in our solutions, that we're trying to solve stuff, is that we're not thinking of all the different entities that are involved. We just think of our little personal corner or our personal need. But we really need to work this out. It has been brought up about Riley Street, having a tunnel put underneath and help the traffic of pedestrians crossing Sutter Street. During revitalization, that street, Riley and Sutter, was supposed to have a left-hand turn heading west to the parking lot. There is none there and looks like there's going to be an accident someday on that corner, coming down that hill of Riley. Those are things that are desperately need to be addressed for the safety for all of us. Going uphill, downhill, walking here, there, wherever. Anyway, thank you for the evening.
Thank you, Dino.
Your next speaker is Jennifer Lane.
Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing us again sincerely. Especially with the two of you going out, we really appreciate it. I probably know half of the people in this room based on problems in the historic district. So all these problems have brought me lots of friends over the years. I heard so many good ideas tonight, so I don't need to repeat everything. I know your favorite is Ditto and I'm comfortable with that. I'm going to bring something up that I haven't heard today, tonight. And that is, there are increasingly so many more events in the historic district, almost every weekend. And when we discussed the revitalization of the street, I know we talked about putting a marquee probably at Granite Park, where at least the residents would know when an event was coming and they could plan their wedding or their party, an event that they had. So, I mean, I think that that definitely needs to be looked at, to be coordinated. I have so much to say, but I mean, I think, I think the neighbors of mine have said it very well tonight. And I hope that you take it to heart because it's been a long night. And thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it very much. Okay, well, I know that's the end of the speakers. You know, one of the things that, and it's funny because most of you touched on my notes. So Glenn, were you peeking at my notes? Jennifer, are you peeking at my notes? So was Dino. The rest of my notes were saying, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, that this is a workshop to open the dialogue. This is not to stop the dialogue, make decisions and just start going through all the suggestions that were made. This is to get the suggestions out on the table and they're, they're all been well-recorded and so on and so forth. But my, my request is, as we have done many times, and the most recent one was the redevelopment project. Don't do that. This is waking everybody up because it's getting late. Is to reconvene the same type of process we did then. So everybody sounds like we're on the same page. In other words, it'd be city staff, residents, merchants, and anybody in the city that's interested. Because to me, the jewel of our heritage is still historic district. It needs to be all-inclusive. Great ideas, great suggestions, and, and I think hopefully we might actually find some consensus. And I remember when, when Mayor Fayert was, was on the council as one of my colleagues, we had a discussion about sidewalks. That's when I first remember it. And, and the challenge about the sidewalks is half the district didn't want it, half the district did. We're not going to sit in the middle and play referee. We need consensus. We need overwhelming consensus. Where we did have consensus, we did put in sidewalks. Where we did have consensus, we did put things in. When we didn't have consensus, we weren't, like I said, we weren't going to play referee. So it sounds like we got more consensus going in the district. And that's where, you know, my request to my colleagues is, is, you know, let's give direction to the city manager to implement the same system you and Mr. Palmer and the rest of folks use for the, for the renovation project, redevelopment project, if you will, on Sutter Street, and start putting an outreach out to everybody. Because, I mean, I wrote down twenty-two different suggestions and I think all of them have merit, quite frankly. Wayfinding, we've been talking about forever. We've been doing a little bit. We can do better and I know we can do better. The parking structures, yeah, they've been around for a very long time. Yeah, the funding upside the head when it took redevelopment away did set us back because again, we reprioritized some of the other funding availability we had for others there in the city that were not eligible for redevelopment. It's not an excuse. It's a fact of life. Because we had a program that was available. So why take dollars that couldn't be used down here, put them over here, take the dollars that only could be used here? And that's why we redirected. And unfortunately, that got taken away. To Carrie's point again, one of the sensitivities we will look at and work with the legal department is being sure that if we do charge for parking, we have to be careful with the reach back that the state did with the redevelopment money in some of our assets. And if we violate some of those rules and restrictions, yeah, we don't want them to take our fourteen million dollar parking structure away from us. So great suggestions. We've wanted to do that for a while, but that's the sensitive we have to walk through. Especially since, I guess, your successor agency group doesn't get to meet anymore. So we will walk through that. But the key message here, quite frankly, is I'd like to direct the city manager again to implement the same task force that, composition that we did before. I know Karen had mentioned, her and I had a long conversation, that yes, we'd like to do that. Which is why we put this workshop together, is let everybody know, this is the first step. We're not going to move slow on this, though. I think we've got enough ideas out. We've got enough energy out. We've got a lot of expertise in here. Now we can start putting solutions in place. The key that we'll need your assistance on with everybody participating is come to a consensus. Because, you know, the last thing we all hate up here is neighbors versus neighbors and they're asking us to make a decision. Now, if I got a seventy-five, twenty-five, I'm going with the seventy-five, but I'm not going to get in the middle of a fifty-fifty. We've had too much of that. I see Mayor Holden is right there and he's smiling because he knows exactly what we've been talking about. So, you know, if the council members, something want to weigh in and something, what we discussed this evening, that's great. That would be my direction to the manager is, is to kind of start the conversation amongst the five of us. We're just recreating a process we've already done. Works really, really well. And I agree with you, Dorothy, as I'm glad you're still there because it's one of my favorite shops in all time, down on Sutter Street. So with that, I'll go open up for the five of us. So who wants to lead off up here?
I will.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Well, first of all, I took notes too and I brought a lot of notes. When I sat for years back in the back, listening to this council and watching people from Old Town come up, I wasn't very too interested because I had another job and that was making parks. But when I got on this council, about a year and a half after I was on the council, I got invited down to a ladies' house down on Wool. And it was about parking, about people being drunk, sitting on a porch and all, everything he said, you know what it was. And I asked the city manager, which was then disappointed Everett, and I asked Cindy to, Cindy to come down, the new police chief. And that was at the time when the Pal House decided they were going to take the initiative and they had College Town, Tuesday night, College Town, and there was a riot on the street. And that led to this council coming up with the entertainment ordinance to try to curb some of that. We tried and we didn't get it because what we hear and what I heard tonight again, we have to be competitive in the business, so don't charge parking. Or is that the attitude down in Sacramento now, in most places? I'm not saying be not competitive with the merchants, but at the time. But I've got a couple of things, a number of things I want to run through. And I'm going to use my little glass because I'm not quite ready to do it without it. First of all, we got to quit making a fifty-two week, a year operation for businesses and special events. You know, we, in the Parker Rec Commission, in a joint use agreement with the school district, using some of their facilities and they using some of ours, we have what we call blackout days. The school needs certain days to do their operation and then we can use some other days. We got to get to that. The residents, now, I want to say one thing right before I say anything else. I'm thinking on both sides of the street, on Riley, I'm going, I'm going to the other side and this side. Because we, we seem to be thinking always on this side where most of the businesses are, okay, and most of bars are. But we have to think of the, of the, I'm thinking of the people that live down there. And I, it very good sense when somebody said, well, you shouldn't have moved there. No, maybe we shouldn't have done and turned forty-seven, thirty-seven bars and restaurants down there. Maybe that's what we should have done. Because a lot of people were telling they should not have moved there. Been there before the, before the bars showed up. So we have to consider, we have to change our attitude on how we treat the Old Town. And I don't live in Old Town, okay? But I consider, I consider, think how they're, how they're suffering at times because I know. But first of all, we got to think of both sides of the street equally. I don't mean just Sutter Street. I mean Figueroa and Mormon and everything. But we have to have a schedule. We have to sit down with the city leading the way and work with the merchants association, work with the homeowners association and any other stakeholders. And it should be led by this council, okay? And we have to sit down and we have to decide what dates and how many events are we going to have. Every Tom, Dick and Harry, now you have some historical events. You have the Antique Fair, you have the Christmas Fair. You have a number of them that we've done for years down there. And I'm not advocating get rid of them. But every Tom, Dick and Harry that wants to promote some event in this town does not have to start or finish in Old Town. Because when you start or finish, you bring all the traffic down. It's just the way it is. And when you talk about a parking structure, a number, number of spots, we just don't count them right, okay? We need, we need a survey, and I'm not sure people will cooperate with this, but I hope they would. But we need to go down to every home in Old Town and ask them, would you just tell us what's your capability? Do you have a garage? Do you, have you room to park a car in the garage? Would you park your car in the back of your house? Some will not. I don't know. I, I tried to drive down some of the alleys in, in Old Town. You're just not going to park a car and drive down it. It's just almost one-way traffic. So we, we, we have to change our method of finding out how many spots do we need, okay? If a home has three cars or four cars, we got to know that. We can't just assume it's a, it's a house and one car required. In order to really get at this problem, we got to get numbers that are factual, not based on hypothesis and all that. We got to go down and ask the people to help us so that we can help them, okay? And a lot of this stuff is, is not going to happen overnight, but we got to get started on something. Like I say, we, we have to, we have to, we have to change our whole mental attitudes. We have to give amenity and quality of life back to the people of Old Town. At the same time, we cannot kill the merchants, okay? Now, that sounds very easy to say and one hell of a job to do. But that's the challenge, folks. Don't fool yourself. That's the challenge, okay? And I think we can do it. But we got to get started. Maybe we won't get it all done. Maybe we'll get it done by inches, but we got to get it done. Parking availability. Mark, I just don't think there's, I don't see that now. I've been going down to meetings here the last three, month and a half on Measure E. We're meeting in Hopseines. And I park my car in the garage so I can feel what it does. And I walk from that garage to Hopseines. For my age, guys, it's a pretty good hike, okay? But I can see why some people don't want to mark, in the evening time, march back to the garage because it's a little scary. If I was a woman, I would definitely be a little scary, okay? So what do we do? We have to, we have to increase what we've talked about, putting the surveillance in that garage to make it safer, okay? And maybe have an officer drive through there more often than not on a trip. I don't expect them to hang out there. But we have to, these are all concurrent things that we got to do together. It's, it's a package. And if we don't get them done, we're never going to, so we're all going to be back here, or I probably won't, but they're all going to be back here many, many years, okay? Some of the events, I love them. I think the Pumpkin Patch was a tremendous event. Great. But when you bring five thousand people into Old Town, that's one heck of a deal, okay? And, and, and the, I keep forgetting, what's the name of the street right there? Probably, no, Pat, on the other side. Reading. Okay, excuse me for forgetting. Reading is, is that best of one-way street and we, we park cars on both sides and try to pass two cars. It's, we try to get four, move four cars up Reading from Sutter Street up to Natoma. And there's no room for two cars or one car. We got to, we've got to put no stopping or no parking signs on one side of that street. Or we're going to have one heck of a problem. I walk it. And when I can't hardly walk up there on a special event, I know you can't drive up it, okay? We have to start a parking structure. The debt service of this city right now has been good because all these guys and all the ones that've been here so long and the city managers, they've done a good job of bringing our debt service down. So, boy, we shuttered when you used the redevelopment money for the garage, which is great. We, we probably would have used it again, except they took it. But that, we can't, that's not an excuse. We're going to have to figure out how to go, if we have to go in debt, go in debt. But it's not going to be just the city in debt. The residents and, and merchants and associations are going to have to help us, okay? Because we just can't do it all, but we're going to have to get it done because if we don't get another parking garage, it's not. If anybody thinks when the rail block is done, that it's going to make us real happy. Scott, with a three-hundred-seat capacity to sit down, and our ordinance now, which I already talked to our director, Bonnie, about this, she knows my views on it, we don't count outside parking, outside seating when we do our parking requirements. And I understand her logic and why the logic of everybody is. It cuts down on maybe businesses starting up. But that is not helping us. So we're going to have to start changing our ordinance, how we count requirements for parking, okay? And I, I got down here also, we're going to have to take a hard look at our HDC. If the HDC is going to be nothing but a rubber stamp for parking variances, and, and that isn't solving the problem. When you, when you put up two, three-story buildings in place of one story and then you say the parking across from Hopseines is the excuse for the variance, and you know darn well, it's going to go. darn well it's going to go, it's going to disappear, it's not going to be there, and we do that constantly up and down Sutter Street. We've got some buildings built with no, with a variance and no parking. That's ridiculous. It just doesn't make good sense. We have to stop doing that. Again, I can walk from the garage, if I can walk from the garage, you can walk down to Mary's at Powell House, and further down, you can walk from the garage to the steakhouse, okay? But you've got to be safe walking down. I think Sutter Street up until maybe some homeless is we're concerned now, it's been safe. And I don't say the homeless are going to hurt you, but you're worried about them. I've got a bunch, I'm not going to keep going on, but the bottom line, we have to change our mentality of what we've had for 20 years around here. The merchants dictate how we do it, and I appreciate the merchants because they bring us a lot of good stuff. I appreciate the chamber changing their attitude on the Folsom Line. And I give credit to Andy for stepping in when I was only here a short time, when the discussion was to change it from two nights to three nights, and Andy told the city manager at the time, which wasn't this one, "Change it back, okay? You're not good in three days. You've got two, you're not getting no more." And then they came up to one day, they modified, they cut off so that residents weren't in fact, and then they attempted to cut the traffic down by putting up barricades at certain locations in resident parking, moving only. The only thing they need to do a little bit better is to get a little bit more qualified people at the barricades that will tell people, "You can't come down here, turn around and go back up somewhere," okay? But they made a good attempt, I think. They haven't solved the problem of the residents, okay? But they did make an attempt, so I give them credit for that. So those are the kind of things we've got to do. We've got to look around and see just, we've got to change our mentality. When Dino says we've got no handicap parking, I'm not handicapped, I have now a little bit my eyes, but I can walk. If we make handicap, people park in the garage and walk anyway, just to get to Sutter Street from the garage for a handicap is a problem. We can't do that. We should be ashamed of ourselves. I didn't realize that, and I should have, I should have been more aware. But the whole thing I'm saying, our mentality in the past, good, me and Steve tried to work something out, we got delayed, and then we got off on other big subjects, and time goes by. But now we've got to open it up again and take another look at it. And I'm going to recommend to the, since Roger and I have at least two years retainability, and Carrie, Carrie comes back, okay, fine, she's going to be longer. But I'm going to recommend to the mayor to give some consideration that makes Roger, myself, the co-chair, of actually being indicated as a co-chair to keep moving on this. But like I say, I'm not asking, it's not a decision-making tonight, it's just ideas, but I'm throwing that out at the mayor. But I'm telling you, folks, if we don't change our mental attitude on how we attack Old Town, this is not going to be an Old Town. This is going to be a honky-tonk, and nobody's going to come down. And we need to rotate some of these big events. Maybe Folsom Line has to go to the platter every other third year or something, okay? And I'm not trying to cut business from the, from the, the businesses. I'm not doing that. But we've got to moderate everything, otherwise we're going to, we're going to be in a real, when that rabble block gets completely done, and I think, Mark, what you and your consultant there is going to have to do, you've got to go back, look, I've been told by Jerry Beno that he has 34 spots authorized by contract with the city in that garage. So if you've got 300 subtract 34, because he has authorization to use it on the rabble block somewhere. I don't know his shoe, but I don't have no doubt that he's telling me the truth. But those are the kind of things we've got to put in our equations, or we're just chasing shadows. We're not going to solve a darn thing. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to change our thinking and, and, and ex-mayor over there, the guy with the big house, me and him, we used to fight on a stop sign on Wool because I didn't want to stop with my stick shift because I couldn't stop, I rev backwards. And he, you know, he started all the traffic going by because he wanted to slow them down, and I, I don't want to slow down, I've got to go backward. He's right, we need a commission, and we need, and as the mayor said, we need stakeholders. But we can't have the stakeholders coming with the attitude of the past stakeholders. They've got to be enlightened, and we've got to, all of us, and think of a different mode of getting the job done. Or we're right back here in another four, five years, in two years, three years, we have nothing done. And then when that rabble block is done, you're going to be screaming. Because the people that buy those condos and live in those apartments, they're going to be up in arms because they're going to see tons of people just driving around looking for a spot. So I'm sitting up for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate everyone coming out. I have multiple pages of good notes. A few months ago, I held a meeting in Old Town, and it was pretty much focused around parking and traffic and whatnot, and I agree with the commission, I agree with laser focusing on this. I segmented it into three different things, traffic, safety, and parking. It's really, you know, sidewalks are a must. I don't know why we don't have them. I was a kid skating down and whatever on Sutter Street, it was pretty treacherous then, and it's even worse now. Couple of things that stood out for me, permanent parking, if we did that, I'd love to see some sort of like, you know, Carmel Car Badge or something where it shows the historic part of the historic Folsom and do that. Valet parking was something that actually sounded like it could be something pretty, implemented pretty soon and utilize that garage. I mean, there's such, so many good ideas, I won't take up much time, much time. I'm like that, when I ran for council, you know, I sat in debates four times to some of the points out here, and I did hear, you know, how do we fix parking? How do we fix traffic? And it's easy to just, you know, spew out a couple of ideas at the time and say, "I'll get it." It is very hard to get to this dais and actually try and figure it out with a consensus, so I do give respect to there. But I have two years left, and I want to make it a commitment to actually figure out a way to move forward and do this too. So I like the two-by-two commission idea too, so. Thank you.
Steve, disallow me one saying, I left a key point, I think it was Doug mentioned it, or our Dorthea lady mentioned it. We have got to make the employees go into the garage. If we had to put decals on their cars, and I don't know if it's legal, but I sure think it's a hell of a good idea, and if they park in the residential area and they got a detail, they're going to get a ticket, okay? And that's the only way you're going to get them in there because nothing else would get them out of there, okay? So that's one point I forgot to mention, that is a key part of this, employees are supposed to be parking on the top floor, as I've been told, and they're not, not many of them. They're all up in the, you know, the closest to their office or their business, they're going to park, and that's usually the residential area.
Okay. Your end.
Yeah, just, you know, not a whole lot to add as far as support for getting a working group put together to look at this stuff. And I guess my emphasis would be based on all the ideas that have been bandied about, is just really a quick focus on the least costly and least controversial stuff, because I think I've heard three or four things that could probably really be addressed quickly that I would believe everybody would support. I think the most interesting thing I heard this evening was making the parking structure look uglier, so it looks like a parking structure. But I know that's not what anybody was advocating for, but, but I liked hearing that because that was the intent. For those of us involved in this, we expended extra money to make that thing look like it fit in the historic district. So I think that falls in that good problem to have, but a solvable problem as far as increasing the utilization of that, that structure, so. But completely supportive of formulating some sort of a working group that can really get going on some of this stuff.
Carrie?
I'd really like to see, oop. Really like to see employees parking in the parking structure. If there's some way to get the P on the building or above the building, maybe a signpost on the top floor, something like that, that would make it visible from further away, and perhaps less costly than actually attaching it to the building. I think that putting together a working group is a really good idea. I just hope we can get some reasonable solutions far more quickly than it took us to come up with the revitalization of the historic district, because that was what 20-plus-year process. There's been a fair number of good ideas. I have a feeling that it's going to be a mix of ideas that ultimately lead to the, solution to the problem. And based on my look at the expectation and time, I say we need to find a way to start moving on the parking structure probably by year three or sooner. And if I remember correctly, the last estimate that we were looking at for Trader's Lane, I think, was $20 million, so. Am I in the right ballpark, Mark? And, you know, and if there's a way to keep portions of the existing parking lot open during that construction, if there's a way to sequence it, I think that would be helpful.
That sounds like the right number, but you also note construction costs are like way up now.
I know.
The price tag's probably a lot higher now.
Okay. But, but that's something I think we need to know the answer to that question because that was the biggest bang for the buck, and I'm sure that probably hasn't changed, it's just a question of what is the cost-inflated number of whatever the, from whatever year we got that last ballpark estimate. And I'd like to move forward with that sooner, assuming that we can find a way to finance it.
Hey, Mark, on that aspect, I know this sounds really weird, but I'd like to see if we look at, on a side note, a rooftop park-type scenario with any new building that we're proposing, so we can actually utilize space above, distinctive by nature. And not that, I don't know how that mitigates as far as the traffic spot, or the parking spots, but it'd be nice to just theorize and maybe start looking that way.
So, Mark, one thing that I think we don't even need to talk about in the committee is go ahead and work with the manager, and Elaine, if you would, get that parking identification and stuff up.
Definitely.
Parking structure identification and stuff up. Because again, I don't think we need a committee to tell us that, we need to do that. So we'll bring it back for formulation for next meeting. We'll make appointments as far as the two people representing the city council at that point in time.
Okay.
Steve, can we have a discussion about whether we need to have two people representing the city council or?
We'll have a discussion, as I said, we'll bring it back next week because if we do appoint someone, we need it on the agenda as an action item, so.
I'd like to at least have the discussion about it.
Oh, no, absolutely, we will. Yeah, I'm not predetermined anybody, we'll have that discussion. And if the council decides we don't need two of us on there, and it can be an after-the-fact, so these guys speak freely, or it's whatever we decide, as far as the five of us. But I think you have probably a commitment list as far as the, commitment list, contact list from previous players. I know that Karen probably has a lot. I know the Historic District Association and the folks do. I know the residents do, so if in doubt, send an email to us if you want to be contacted for this, so it's easier for you to tell us, know you want to be on it, and us knocking on door, asking if you want to be on it. If you have people in the district that you know that want to be on it as well, that weren't able to make it this evening, or maybe don't know about this meeting, please let them know as well. Like I said, I want this all-inclusive. I don't think it just needs to be a small group. I think everybody's voices are important because we would like to reach a consensus, kind of like what you said, Roger, we didn't reach consensus on a lot of items, so it's not that we were kicking them down the, down the road. We couldn't get consensus from the merchants or the neighbors or one half a neighborhood here and this and that. It's like, come on, guys, we, we're asked to do something, we need your assistance in coming up with a, with a consensus from, from the neighbors and businesses alike. So I think we have the momentum to do that.
Steve, can I just add one more question to Mark? Assuming that we move forward with this, with regard to the whole discussion about sidewalks, and I'm going back 15 or more years, I think what needs to happen is that there needs to be some maps of the district that show, because I know we've got locations where we've got parts, cars that are parking perpendicular to the roadway, and I think it's important for the residents, who may or may not realize where their property line is, to know that, what the ramifications are, where the city's right-of-way is, if sidewalks were to go in, where they, where they would be going. I think, I want everybody to be fully aware of that, because I know that was a big bone of contention the last time.
No, we had the mouse from, we had the discussion not too long ago.
I think maybe we could do perhaps some type of aerial that then lays down proposed sidewalk lines. Is that where you're kind of getting at, Councilmember Howe?
We do have those from, from a previous.
No, because I know there's locations on, there's a number of locations where there's landscaping and retaining walls and stuff that are actually well within the city's easement.
Yeah.
So I just want people to be aware before they.
Well, thank you, everybody, for staying up late with us and trying to get this thing going, but I think this is well worth every minute that we spent, and so I appreciate, literally appreciate everybody's time, and we'll, we're going to get something going here, so appreciate it very much.
And Mayor, I'll move to waive the 10:30 rule so we can listen to city manager comments.
Anybody want to second that?
I'd be seconded.
Okay. Yes, we will. So go ahead and, well, since he already announced that he took the clerk's thunder, so city manager report.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to share that Lorraine Pagioni, who's right over there, has been named as our new Parks and Rec Director. Yay. Lorraine has been with the city for almost 16 years, and she is our, has been our very talented landscaping and lighting district manager, and I know that she knows so many players in the city already, so it's a natural and exciting transition for all of us. Safewise.com named the city of Folsom as the 15th safest city in California, which is exciting. We have recently added text to 911 emergency services, so you can now text 911 with, with your emergency. We do, we do recommend voice calls as your, you know, your primary means of reaching 911, but that is an alternative if you're in a situation where you can only text. The Folsom Police Department is doing trick-or-treat with the, with the Folsom PD from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturdays, so little trick-or-treaters can come in costume and trick-or-treat at the police department, but no costumes with weapons, please. And finally, just today, we launched a new website devoted to resources to help those who are struggling with homelessness, if that is something where you're encountering people with, who are homeless and you're wondering what to do. We have a whole website now dedicated to that with resources and phone numbers and ideas, because it's a very challenging, broad-spectrum problem. Thank you.
Roger, start down this evening.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Carrie?
Please drive carefully.
Somebody's hauling something.
The website can be found at folsom.ca.us, and if you look under our Residential Services section, you will see it there. We also push it out on social media, so if you go to our Facebook or Instagram or any of our platforms, you'll see the link.
Okay. Andy?
You know, just one thing. Margie Donovan mentioned Lydia and our city clerks folks putting together kind of that audible PDF or whatever they called it, and was just wondering if we could do that on a regular basis. Was that difficult, or do we need some special software, or how's that work? Okay, great, great, great news. And thanks for your efforts on doing that for Margie. Thanks.
Okay, I just have to do one thing. Again, I have to report out that I was at the wardens' meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, statewide wardens' meeting on behalf of ACAPS, obviously reminding them what we do and the partnership we've created with them. But I think one of the most demonstrative things we heard from the wardens was they appreciate, well, backup. Over half the wardens didn't know ACAPS existed because they're fairly new, and wardens seem to kind of transfer and rotate on a very frequent basis. I've lost count how many I've known over there. But what was really nice is they actually came up to us and invited us to come to their next meeting, as we had actually invited them to come to a gang violence meeting with us, because we need to know what happens once they're in there, so we have an idea of their mentality while they're out here. So I was really pleased that the meeting went over extremely well. And I did make a pitch again for the 750-bed medical facility, because like I said, it's a huge benefit for Folsom, and I selfishly like for the community, if we get it built, then they'll leave us alone as far as talking about putting death row out here. So let's hope we keep our fingers crossed. So there's my report out for where I was last, last week on behalf of the city. And that's, again, thanks, Mr. Vice Mayor, for, it was two weeks, I guess, for running the meeting while I was down there.
He should give you a good agenda.
Yeah, he was appreciative that I gave him a 30-minute agenda, because it was past his bedtime and he couldn't get a hold of me. So, just kidding. Anyway, so thank you, guys, for, again, I apologize for missing the meeting last time, but that's, that's where I was, and I think it was an extremely vital, important meeting that I did attend, and I think we got some good feedback out of it, and hopefully, since the decision-makers are there regarding the medical facility, I took a shot at it and figured what the heck, so. Yes, sir.
Could we have a copy of Mark's?
PowerPoint, absolutely. I can get Mr. Recavance's PowerPoint to you.
Okay. So with that being said, we're going to adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everybody, again, for staying so late with us. Meeting adjourned.